All right, if you can stand by. Is Ana Villegas and Michelle Roldan from Garfield Elementary, are you guys present? Why don't you come to the microphone, I'm gonna call you in a moment and you're gonna do the pledge of allegiance. Just take that mic, bring it down, and if you could all stand, we're gonna join him for the pledge of allegiance.
Put your right hand over your heart, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We have our police chaplain, Tom Jones, is gonna give us our invocation here today.
Let's pray. Our dear Father in heaven, we are grateful once again to be allowed to enter into your presence, and we humbly ask for your continued blessings on the assembly of your dear people, the city council, the mayor, and all the law enforcement officials here today, Lord. The Apostle Paul said in Romans, Chapter 13, verses 1 through 7, that "we, the people of your hands, have authorities set over us, to whom we are to render our taxes, revenue, respect, and honor to." Tonight, we give thanks for those that you have set in the positions of authority. We ask that you bless them, keep them safe, guide them in the direction that you would have them lead. I pray for our new chief, Carlos Rojas, and I ask that you, dear God, put your hand upon him, bless his family as he carries out the duties as you have ordained him to do. Give him wisdom, patience, compassion, and guidance as needed. We, the chaplains and officers, look forward to serving under a great man who we all respect and honor with our service. Lord, we ask for the city that you continue to have your loving hands on it, bless its people, keep all of them safe and secure. We pray for the meeting tonight, have your way here in the midst of your people. Lord, we all pray together, the Lord is my shepherd I shall not want. He maketh me to lie down in green pastures, he leadeth me beside still waters, he restoreth my soul, he leadeth me in the paths of righteousness for his name's sake. Yea, though I walk in the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for thou art with me. Thy rod and thy staff, they comfort me. Thou preparest a table before me in the presence of mine enemies. Thou anointest my head with oil, my cup runneth over. Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life, and I will dwell in the house of the Lord forever." Lord, we ask for the LAPD officers that have been injured and killed, Lord. Lord, we ask specifically for LAPD Officer Roberto Sanchez, working in Harbor City. God, we know that he's a citizen here in Santa Ana, and the city resides somewhere in the neighborhoods. God, we lift him up to you now. Lord, we ask that you bless and you keep his family. The Lord make his face shine upon them and gracious to them. The Lord lift up his countenance upon them and give them peace. We pray these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, may be seated. And I wanna thank everybody for coming out here today, and before we do a swearing-in ceremony for our new chief, Police Chief Rojas, I have a request from Mayor Pro Tem Nahedo because on Bristol Street, I think we have a lot of folks here. Please, let me turn it over to you for a moment.
I just, there, on Bristol Street, we do have a few folks that wanna speak today. I don't wanna keep people here. If I, if we can bring it up now, we'd like to make a motion to continue this item and talk it over with our staff. We can get a better--
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, do you mind if I just interrupt you for a second? I'm gonna recuse myself from this vote or motion that's gonna take place out of order because I have a conflict. I received campaign contributions from some of the--
All right, so this is gonna be a very quick motion, and then we'll get right back to the program, because I know we have even more folks waiting for the swearing-in ceremony of our new chief. So with that, why don't you please make--
I'll make a motion to continue it.
Second. We have a motion to continue it for 30 days, or how long?
30 days.
All right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. So anybody here for Bristol Street, you can stay and watch the presentation, but the motion's been continued.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll go with the program, and this is gonna be the swearing-in ceremony for our new Chief of Police, Chief Carlos Rojas, who will be the 20th Chief of Police here in the city's history. So let's give him a warm applause to Carlos. I believe Carlos has been here since 1990 or so, and really worked his way up the ranks. We all have a lot of nice things to say about him, and what I'd like to do is I'd like to keep it brief, but I wanna open up to council members and the city manager. Does anybody wanna say a quick, wanna do it afterwards? Fine, all right, so at that point then, let me turn it over to the city manager, and I believe he's gonna invite the clerk, and you're gonna conduct the oath of office, and we'll go from there.
Invite the honor guard and the members of the family up here, please, and the chief. And I'll just say that this is an amazing honor for me to be involved in the selection of a new chief. I have in front of me a California Police Chief magazine that was published recently, and it's a picture of the chief, and what it says about him is that "The heart of Santa Ana Police Department," and his heart's in his work, and he has displayed that heartfelt work all throughout his career. And again, before we present him with the oath, let's give him another round of applause for his book.
I, Carlos Rojas, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, that I will and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you. Well, first and foremost, I do wanna thank my wife and my family for all their support and their love throughout my career. Is all of those in uniform in this room, no? There's, it's a very difficult job to be a police officer at any rank, whether you're here in the city of Santa Ana or any other city in the United States. So please, a round of applause for my family. I'm truly humbled and honored to serve as the chief here in Santa Ana, and as I look around the room, I see folks from LA County, Orange County sheriffs, FBI, and I see our Santa Ana police officers here, and I really appreciate your attendance and your support. And my hat goes off to all the men and women of the Santa Ana Police Department that go out there and do the difficult job every single day under some difficult circumstances at times. So, so thank you. A round of applause for all the Santa Ana police officers. And I do wanna recognize the community members, the reason I'm here is because of you, the service that we provide to the community, and always striving to do better, and always trying to raise that bar for everybody, regardless if it's the chief of police, or it's the police explorer that represents the Santa Ana Police Department. And I think the beauty of the city of Santa Ana is that we can come together, and oftentimes we may not, we may not agree, but I think we do a pretty good job at working through issues. And as I see folks off here to my left, I know we've had, we've had some dialogues on various issues, and thank you for coming out, and I can see you have, you have some other issues to bring forth, and that's what makes our country beautiful, is the freedom to come here and express yourself. But as you all know, and I know I can look all of you in the eye over here, and you know my willingness to communicate with you and work through issues, so, so thank you as well for coming out. And the bottom line is, as public servants, we always have to strive to do better. And I think I would not be here in this position to take this role of leadership without the support of all of you in here. And as I look around, there's a lot of folks that I've seen, and we've gotten to know each other over the years, some folks that I've only known maybe for a month or so, but you've all had an impact on my career and had made a difference. And I do want to thank the council for their support, both individually and collectively as a body. And for those of you that aren't aware, I did serve as a city manager twice through the last couple of years, so. So there's, there's a lot, lot of trust and faith that these folks put in me, and then I do appreciate that, that support. And then lastly, of course, Mr. Cavazos, I wanna thank you for the appointment, and you know, with all due respect, if I didn't believe in, in your vision, I would not have accepted the appointment, but I do believe in your vision, and I know you're here to make Santa Ana a better place, as we all are, so thank you very much. And I do thank all of you sincerely for coming out, and I thank you for, for your ongoing support. Thank you.
Before I begin my comment on Chief Rojas, I'd like to acknowledge our sheriff, Hutchins is in, in the house here, so thank you for being here and being supportive of our chief. And Carlos, you know, I'll tell you that, yes, you were our city manager, you've been our acting chief, and on, on behalf, you know, I purchased this on myself, but on behalf of the entire mayor and council, you know, I, I, you know, and I purchased this Santa Ana pin from Teresa's Jewelers, and people would say, "Why would you spend this kind of money on, on an employee?" And the reality is that Carlos is not just an employee, he's family. And, you know, I truly wanna thank you and your family for your leadership, and for, you know, sticking through the difficult times, and we're now here to see the fruits of the labor as we move forward as a city. This city, it's truly a rebirth. It's a new day in the city of Santa Ana, to have our first Latino police chief in the history. We should give a round of applause for that. And I say that not because of, of my skin color, but because we are 78% Latino here in the city of Santa Ana, and it is certainly really good when we have staff in the city, in city government, not elected officials, but it's staff that represents its community. It is very important, diversity is key, and truly today, you see that here in the city of Santa Ana with all our staff, Sonia Cavalllo, our city manager, David Cavazos, our clerk of the council, Maria Wezar, and so, you know, I'm gonna cut it short because I know many of my colleagues have a lot to say, but I wanted to buy this gold pin that's, it's city of Santa Ana, it certainly doesn't have a diamond like Mr. Cavazos', I, you know, I don't make that much money, but I wanted, you know, to provide you a symbol of my appreciation, of your hard work, and the team that you're gonna lead here, which is a remarkable Santa Ana Police Department, and I am certain and confident that you will serve this community with dignity, with respect, and integrity. Thank you, Carlos, and welcome aboard as our new chief. And this is gold.
I really appreciate your work, Chief Rojas. I really like him because he's short, I'm short. You know, he's brown, I'm brown. He carries a gun and I'm brown. But the truth is this, in all seriousness, and I am gonna make it very short, there are many stories that I could tell you about Chief Rojas. I was able to go with him to El Salvador, I will never do that again. And we went to different groups to teach them what he has developed here in the city of Santa Ana. Our crime goes down because of the work he has done for many, many years, and he's been out there. The rank and file, I appreciate your support of our new chief. I know that he has been a leader in your ranks for many, many years, and he will continue to do so. What I do believe in Chief Rojas is that he understands the heartbeat of the community. I think that you are a wonderful role model for our students here in the city, our young people here in the city, and there is a great responsibility that is placed upon you, and I know that you're gonna serve to the highest level that you can possibly serve. And we went out for a national search, and he came out on top. So that's, that's the most important thing, we talk about all these other things, but he was a top candidate, and he just happens to be someone who has his heart right here in the city. Thank you.
Well, I was gonna tell Michelle, I'll contribute to a cubic zirconium, I don't know about a diamond on that pin, but, but I wanna, you know, say this is a very special, significant, historic moment, because, you know, we're removing a title before the police chief's name, and we've had him as acting interim city manager, and now he's officially our police chief. And what's important about that is that, I think as was mentioned, I'm very glad that we went inside to select our police chief as opposed to going outside, because I believe that the chief understands this community, I believe that he's worked with it very long, and he's a fair, compassionate, balanced person, and that's something to us that's very important, we have a diverse community. And the fact that he's the first Latino chief is not insignificant, it's a major step in the, in the right direction for this department. I think that people realize that it's important to have somebody who understands not only the people that we all serve, but is gonna head this department into the next, you know, 10, 20 years. And so it's very, very significant that we have somebody like Chief Rojas, and I wanna thank the rank and file, because they all would tell us, "Look, he's somebody that we've worked with, he stood side by side with us, and he's the right person to lead us." And it's important when the city family, the department of your colleagues vests that much trust in you, because it's a very difficult job. My brother-in-law was an LA County sheriff, and I believe Sheriff Hutchins, you knew him, Officer G-12, he was killed in the line of duty, and I know how difficult the job it is. So when your peers have that vote of confidence in you, when the community is supportive of you, when the city family is behind you, we know we made the right selection. So we're very proud that we can take that prefix away from your title, you're no longer acting, you're no longer interim, you're our chief, and hopefully that's gonna remain that way for a very, very long time. I wanna thank your family for allowing you to serve us and to work with us, because it's a, you know, as we know, it's the family that really makes the sacrifice in this role. So thank you, Mrs. Rojas, and to your kids. And Chief, all I can say is, I took that trip to El Salvador with Mayor Pro Tem and the chief and one other officer, and the reason why I'm standing here, because it was a very dangerous place, is because of you guys for it. So on behalf of my wife, thanks for bringing me home safe. But thank you for always being so committed to what you do here in the city and taking care of all our residents, so congratulations once again.
Thank you.
I wanna thank all of you for taking the time to come here and be present, again, officers and managers from different other agencies, we also have Orange County Fire Authority here as well, who works closely with our police chief and, and police department, and all the officers who, who serve our great city, who've also been here for many years, as Councilman Sarmiento referenced. It's been a couple of years since we've been, you've held this, this position of interim, and at the time when we're looking at making an interim appointment, there were a number of, of phone calls that we received from officers that serve out there on our streets, who were referencing, at the time, Deputy Chief Rojas' name as somebody that they really would like to be able to see because they respected him, that, that spoke a lot. So when we did come to a point of, of supporting and appointing an interim chief, that was an easy move for us to make. And the other, it's been, as I mentioned, two years, as, as you mentioned earlier, that's a pretty long job interview, two-year interview, we gave you plenty of opportunity to trip up, and you know what, you, you made the cut, and you, you hung in there. We, we, we let you, yeah, gave you some, plenty of time, but, but you've done an exceptional job. You know, one of the things that I remember from, I think it was a year ago or so, maybe a year and a half, 4th of July, I was out, actually at the Youth and Government booth, picking up some fireworks out there, and there was this police, black and white, one of our, one of our vehicles out there, and I thought I recognized the officer that was there, but it kind of, I had a double take, because normally I might see him in a suit or at meetings, but it was interim at the time, Chief Rojas, out there, just wanted to be out there with, with his officers that were also required to be out there and serving on a, on a holiday, and so that impressed me quite a bit. That's important for him to be out there and, and connecting, be out there in the streets. I've known of a couple of incidents where you've also had a, had a follow and call-in, either a drunk driver or, or just other incidents going on out there. So he's, does an effective job as a chief and the command post, but also has his eyes out on the streets and is always looking out for the best interest of, of our city. I have an opportunity to serve as the chairman of the Public Safety Committee here for the council, and so we have a regular opportunity to work together and challenge, take on some of the challenges that we have, and one of the other things that impresses me quite a bit is that no matter who is, has a request for a meeting or has a concern to express, you're willing to take those meetings, whether it's a deal with neighborhood complaint or issue, or neighborhood association, or whether it's issue with regard to the jail there, or, and it's whatever language as well, you're, you're always there and available and ready and willing to serve, and that's the type of, of executive that we wanna see, having that example and supporting our community. So congratulations to you, and thank, I wanna thank that Rojas family as well for putting him on loan for us for so many more years. Thank you so much, congratulations.
I wasn't on that trip to El Salvador, but I guess I missed out. I have been working, I've had the pleasure to work with Chief Rojas now for almost two years, and I can say that he's been great as far as keeping our city safe. When he had to step up and be city manager for us, he was willing to do that. I really think we could have not found a better chief for our city. As our Mayor Pro Tem, Salty Nahedo, said, it does do a lot for our youth as well, to see someone like Chief Rojas being our police chief here in our city in Santa Ana, and I think he has the qualities that we need in leaders, he's honest, he has integrity, you know, he's very fair and compassionate, so I look forward to working with you, and I also want to thank your family, because I know that we'll be taking a lot of time away from his family in his new position, although he's been doing it for two years now, so they're probably used to it by now, but, you know, it is a big job that he has, and welcome.
You know, one of the good things about going last is everybody said everything. Well, you know, it, it truly is a great evening for, for Santa Ana as we move forward in, in public safety. And to me, I'm just gonna be really brief, the content of a man's character is really measured by the lives he's touched. And if you look out in the audience today, all the lives that you've touched from different cities, from different agencies, took time out of their schedule to be here to share this celebration with you, talks about the content of your character, and that's exactly the leadership that we need for our city. I think it's absolutely incredible that we have this individual taking our lead. The greater, the grace, the best indicator for future behavior is past behavior, and if we look back in your career, we are looking forward for a great, safe city, and you're the right man for the job, and I'm delighted to have you. Thank you very much.
We had a, an award ceremony recently for the police department, and this was only a few days ago, and that was right after the city manager had announced that Chief Rojas was the selection and that he was the new chief. And it just felt so nice to call him Chief Rojas, because in the past, it's been interim or acting, or, you know, we, it just wasn't necessarily a permanent situation, and I'll tell you, this is a tremendous department. I believe the Santa Ana Police Department, you know, is second to none. You can look at the sophistication of the officers, the, you know, the equipment, the, you know, the software, the, the interaction with, you know, whether it's the FBI, or the district attorney, or the, or the state correction officers, or the marshal's office back in DC. You know, this department works well with everybody, and it works well because of folks like Chief Rojas. As I mentioned earlier, he started here in about 1990, was it? He started in 1990, and that was a different city. If you wanna talk about high crime rate and what we had, that's a city that, that he encountered. But I believe under the leadership of Chief Walters and the tremendous turnaround that began in the 90s, you know, today, you know, we are one of the safest cities of our size in the country, and I have all the confidence in the world that under the leadership of Chief Rojas, that that trend is gonna continue. And I'll tell you, crime is a very tricky thing, it, it can go up and down, but when it steadily goes down, year over year, is because somebody, and in this case, the entire community is doing something right. And, and, and it is a problem that never goes away, but the stronger we get, the better able we're able to focus our resources, and with somebody like Chief Rojas, that understands not only the community, but he understands the inner workings of the, of the police department. He came from not only the police department, but when he started, he was in a much lesser job, much lesser responsibility, and he literally worked his way up. And I believe that is the best, because he knows all the different tasks between the, within the department and what it takes. And so that's what it takes to be a great chief, and I believe we're blessed to have him as our new chief of police. So with that, I don't know if we're gonna take a group photo or what we're gonna do, but, but congratulations, Chief Rojas. You know, there is, there's cake in the back, so I'm gonna do is take a 10-minute recess. Everybody come on up, you can say hi to our new chief, and then in about-- Everybody come on up, you can say hi to our new chief, and then in about 10, 15 minutes, we'll continue with our council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Pulido. Good evening, council members, city staff, including Mr. Cabasos, Chief Rojas, and the Santa Ana community members. My name is Letizia Matan, I'm a board member of Orange County Human Relations. I'm here tonight with my colleague, Tim Cole, to report on some of the work of our non-for-profit organization for 2012, 2013, and activities that we've taken throughout the county, and specifically in Santa Ana over the last year. We'd like to present you with our annual report, and I believe that City Clerk passed those out earlier, which is focused on our organizational mission to build community by fostering respect, resolving conflict, and pursuing equality. You find a lot of outcomes within this report, and in a few minutes, I'd like to call on Tim here, who will speak a little bit on some of these key stats focused on the city for Santa Ana. Every year, some cities in the county struggle with unique conflicts, and Orange County Human Relations seeks to provide targeted support. Some of these conflicts occurred at public meetings and involved profane, abusive, and/or hateful speeches and public demonstrations, where civility was often the first victim. Tim will talk about a unique forum that we recently held, where we brought together a variety of communities' perspectives to deal with this topic.
Good evening. My name's Tim Cole. I'm relatively new on Orange County Human Relations, and Letizia was kind enough to let me tag along with her in giving the presentation before the city council this evening. Abraham Lincoln once said that "there is no right to do a wrong," and that admonition can be very difficult when it comes to some of our cherished rights, like free speech, and especially becomes troublesome when we have to, when that right becomes juxtaposed with our other cherished rights, such as self-representation and participating in city council meetings like this one. And it was for that reason that Orange County Human Relations partnered with the chairman of the Board of Supervisors and the Association of Cities to conduct a forum last year to talk about guidelines for managing civility in public forums. And we looked at the concept of how to balance free speech and hate speech, and we made copies of these guidelines available to you through the city clerk. And with contributions through venerable local attorneys and free speech scholars, Orange County Human Relations has compiled these practical guidelines that address the ill effects of disruptive and hateful speech, without curtailing our proud tradition of free speech. Letizia?
And as I mentioned earlier, I'm going to go ahead and briefly summarize some of the work that we did in the city. We mediated 678 cases, as well as 48 family mediations in the community or courts, where one of the parties was the residents of Santa Ana. In collaboration with Santa Ana Police on hate crimes and individuals or community groups on hate incidents that are not crimes, we documented four hate crimes in Santa Ana in 2012, and provided support to victims through our Victims Assistance Partnership. We helped build a sense of community by providing a conflict management workshop to 12 participants at Taller San Jose, and staff worked with Bishop Maynard residents in three meetings of their task force. One Santa Ana youth attended the summer leadership camp, and three participated in the year-long Human Relations internship program. Forty Santa Ana students participated in our day-long walk-in-walk-in-my-shoes symposium at UCI, learning about respect, tolerance, and making a difference in your school and community.
As we begin the 21st year of Orange County Human Relations partnership with OC Cities, it's notable that in addition to these specific services that we provided to the city of Santa Ana, we also worked to maintain the capacity of Orange County Human Relations throughout the county when human relations crises happened. Our capacity was critical in helping residents to understand what many African-Americans in our community face in our neighborhoods on a daily basis throughout Orange County through our listening sessions program. We also assisted cities in building and rebuilding police and immigrant community relations in the aftermath of sometimes violent confrontations. We also collaborated with others in the community to address the need for permanent supportive housing for the mentally ill and multi-service homeless shelters to reduce the number of people living on our streets.
And I'll conclude by saying that while cities may not have major conflicts every year, when a crisis hit, it can be enormously expensive to address the public safety concerns, human suffering, and reputational costs. With a strong partner like Orange County Human Relations to come alongside and help build out your human relations capacity, you can achieve your public safety and budget goals. We look forward to serving your needs this fiscal year, whether you have specific concerns or benefit from our countywide efforts. And we'd also like to recognize the mayor and city council for taking a proactive approach in being a part of this. So we'd like to present this award to you, as far as recognizing the city of Santa Ana for its outstanding commitment to fostering mutual understanding among residents and eliminating prejudice, intolerance, and discrimination, in order to make Orange County a better place for all people to live, work, and do business.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And as they're coming around, I want to thank them for this recognition on behalf of the city and the city council, and just tell you that you guys do a tremendous job, because you interface with so many cities, and you take on so many issues, and, you know, Rusty Candy, under his leadership, you know, you've been doing a great job for a long, long time. Thank you for that, and let's take a photo here. Donnie Crevié, I think you're probably wondering, when are you going to get your turn to come up? I think your turn is now. Come on up. Come around, come around this way. Yes. Yes, you, Donnie. Izzy is walking, let me tell you, this is a very, very special individual, and as mayor, I want to give him the Mayor's Exceptional Citizen Award this evening. Donnie, how are you?
Good.
He, it's just a fascinating story, the Crevié family and Crevié BMW, and, you know, before that, you know, they were looking, I know, at a Volkswagen dealership, and it was a long time ago when BMW wasn't quite as active or as strong, and for some reason, I think they couldn't get the VW designation, and so with less money, couldn't afford it. But back, what year was that? In the 70s? 1971, but I think they borrowed like $50,000 from an uncle, and then, you know, Robert Crevié, Bob Crevié, Don's father, he put in the rest of the money, and they started a small dealership called Crevié BMW, it was over on First Street. I remember that, it was diagonally across from the muffler shop, McLean Cadillac used to be down there. It was another era, and guess what? Over time, BMW as a brand started to become stronger. It started to grow and grow, and then when the movement occurred, was that like in the 90s or so, early 90s, for auto malls, late 80s? When the movement occurred for the auto malls, they went into the Santa Ana Auto Mall, and they really became the strongest part of the auto mall, just a huge dealership. And I believe they became the number-one BMW dealer in the country, and BMW then became like a company with a lot of, you know, fancy vehicles, and just a huge array of options. And under, you know, Don's father, you know, Bob Crevié, and then for many years, Donnie, he just ran it as a tremendous, tremendous, tremendous dealership. And then when Roger Penske came knocking, how long ago was that? Now we're getting, three years ago, this guy named Rogers Penske came knocking, and many of my colleagues, you know, were with me on the council at the time, and we made a very good decision to allow the sale to the Penske Auto Group, because Donnie wanted to retire. He, and I'll tell you a little bit about what he does here in a moment, because he does a lot of wonderful things to the community. He wanted to retire, but when he sold, he sold to a tremendous entity, which is the Penske Auto Group. And guess what? Now they came into the auto mall. So today they have, I believe, four brands in the auto mall. They've acquired more land, they're going to completely build it out, and it's going to be even a greater auto mall, producing, how much money, Mr. City Manager? They're making a lot of money, right, the auto mall for the city?
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council. Auto sales are 26% of our retail sales in Santa Ana.
How many millions? It's a lot.
Very much. A lot. I don't want to do any trade secrets today.
All right. A lot of money. It's a lot of money. And as he's been doing this, he's also been a friend to the community. And what do I mean by that? You know, when he was growing up, he had some challenging times. There were times when he wondered, you know, is he going to add up to something? Is he going to be able to overcome his obstacles? And he spent a lot of time hanging out at the Boys and Girls Club down in Laguna Beach, and they really helped turn his life around. I think it not only became a home, but it became a path, it became a way, you know, to really overcome some challenges as a teenager and as a youth, and Donnie has never forgotten that, because today he helps not only the Laguna Beach Boys and Girls Club where he was at, but also the Santa Ana Boys and Girls Club where Crevié BMW is at. And he's gone beyond that. He, right now, for example, is helping Think Together, which is a nonprofit organization helping about 100,000 students nationally. He serves actively on the Board of Directors of the Santa Ana Chamber of Commerce, Kids on Track, the Ransantial College Foundation, Career Beginnings, Orange County Human Relations Council, and the Orange County Probation Community Association, and more than that. So, you know, Donnie Crevié, I believe, is a human being that we should all aspire to follow. We should all be blessed that he's in our presence, and we should all, you know, remind ourselves that, you know, when we have obstacles, it's not time to fold, it's not time to say, well, we can't overcome it. It's time to get stronger, it's time to make a difference, it's time to rise up, and it's time to become like Donnie Crevié, that has not only done well for himself, but well for his community. So for that, I want to present him this proclamation, but before doing that, I want him to please say a few words. Well, thank you. That was pretty awesome. I was kind of wondering who you were talking about there for a while. Anyway, it is an interesting story how the BMW store got started. My dad worked, as Mayor Miguel Pulido said, at a Volkswagen agency in the late 60s and early 70s, and I worked at a Ford dealership down in Orange County, and I remember him calling me, you know, about that time, saying, "Do you have any rich friends down there that could help us, you know, buy this Volkswagen agency?" And at that time, for some of you that don't know, Volkswagen was extremely popular, and BMW and Mercedes as well, really were relatively unknown in this country. And at any rate, we couldn't afford Volkswagen, and somebody said to him, "What about BMW?" And he said, "What's that?" And anyway, it took a lot less to capitalize a BMW franchise and dealership than it did Volkswagen. So we never, ever dreamt that things would work out the way they did, but I can say on behalf of my dad and myself, none of us ever had any resources or money in our lives growing up, so we certainly don't want to mess this up. And frankly, we've been very lucky, and we're going to try like heck to help other people along the way as well. And I'm very honored that you would, and the council, would make this presentation to me, and frankly, I receive it proudly, and I receive it on behalf of a lot of things that I'm involved in. High School, Inc., for example, which is one of our Valley High School career technical partnerships, that's frankly very close to my heart right now, so if any of you need to know more about that, please let me know. At any rate, that's a wonderful organization and a wonderful community, and I'm glad to be part of it, and glad to help in our small way, and thanks very much. Donnie, I present to you this proclamation, recognizing you as an outstanding citizen. And really, I want to give it to you, but also wanted to give it to you and your father's memory, because I know how close you guys were, how much you struggled together, you know, how you grew together, how you overcame things. And then when he passed, he already had seen some of the tremendous success that you had achieved, and of course, you've gone beyond that, and you're going to go even beyond where you are today, but just realize that, you know, there's a lot of history here, a lot of years, a lot of appreciation, and we just want to encourage you to continue, to continue to remember Santa Ana as your home, continue to stay as involved as you are, and to be an example for others. Thank you very much for what you do, Donnie. Now we have Councilmember Angie Mesqua doing the next presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and if I can have Ms. Christina Quick, Senior Director of the American Lung Association? We'll get a picture after. As we're making our way up here, I'd like to say a few points. Every five minutes, a woman in the United States is told that she has lung cancer. Lung cancer is now the number-one cancer killer of women, surpassing breast cancer. Last year alone, lung cancer took the lives of more than 72,000 women. On May 11th, the American Lung Cancer Association will launch National Women's Lung Health Week, a national movement to raise awareness and increase support for early detection of lung disease, so that everyone has a fighting chance. Lung Force is the new national movement. It's working to raise awareness and advocate, and its mission is eliminating cancer and lung disease. The Santa Ana City Council is declaring the second week in May as Women's Lung Health Week, and it is my pleasure to present this proclamation. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but whereas chronic obstructive pulmonary disease and asthma have become prevalent for women in the United States, and advocating and increasing awareness for lung cancer, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease and asthma will result in better treatment for women and may lead to saving lives. Now, I, City Council, Angie Mesqua, on behalf of the city council, or Mayor Pulido, do hereby proclaim, May 11th through the 17th, 2014, as National Women's Lung Health Week. And I thank you, I do want to thank you for the great work you do, and for creating greater awareness.
This amount, I want to invite members of Hope Alive Church, Menor's Church, Santana, Nusang Santana, if you would go ahead and come and join us up here up front, please. So while these gentlemen come forward here, I wanted to share a little bit, a little bit of background. You know, oftentimes I mention, when I talk about the city of Santana, and think about, and talk about all of the great things that are going on in our city, I mention that the wind is in our sails. Things are definitely going our way in the city. When you look at, you know, tonight, there's several items on the agenda. We're going to be considering some new housing, new restaurants as well. As you look at our downtown and the arts movement, there's a lot of... well. As you look at our downtown and, and the arts movement, there's a lot of exciting things going on. There was mention of, of the Santa Ana Auto Mall, and how successful it's doing. And, and what were those figures again, Mr. City Manager? There's, there's, we're doing very well. You know, things are, are definitely going, going our way, if you will, in the city of Santana. And I still believe that our, our best days are still ahead. You know, when you have restaurants, and again, housing, and a lot of investment, oftentimes, we ask individuals to come forward when we have a grand opening of a new, new business in town. And when we see that, there's going to be a lot of good that's going to come from that, that investment. You know, so I was talking to a couple of friends here within the last couple of weeks, and recognize, realize that there was, a couple of my friends have embarked on, on making a significant investment of their own, and of their own in our city. And there's three churches that I know of, and that have recently opened their doors, and had held their grand, grand openings here in Santana over the last, last few, few months. And so I thought, you know, that's, that's a pretty neat thing. I, I think frankly, I feel like, like we have, as our city, as I mentioned, those other things that are going on that are good for our city, seeing also the openings of new church communities. God's, we, I feel like we, as a community in Santana, have God's favor. He's looking out for us. And so I thought, you know, it's, it'd be a neat thing to be able to invite them to come over, and, and also welcome them to the city, and congratulate them in their grand openings. And so I want to give each of you a minute. I know most of you, you guys are pastors, and you guys can go on for, for some time. And I've, I've had my share of opportunities to speak at churches too, so I know how that goes. We can speak for a while. So, but if, just a minute, if you wouldn't mind, you guys can get a little, a little closer here. So we've got Tommy Cota here from, from Hope Alive Church. He'll ask me to share a little bit about, about Hope Alive. But one of the, one of the things here with Tommy is, he's the real deal. He's been, he's been working here in our community with our young people, on our campuses, volunteering, and spending a lot of time, creating just different programs and mentoring, and then spending time with our youth for a long time. So I have a lot of respect for him. And when I recently found out a couple of weeks ago that he had launched Hope Alive, I thought, you know, that, that's cool. That's a good deal, because that, he's, this is a guy who, again, loves our city, lives in our city, and is committed to it. So Tommy, can you share us a little bit about Hope Alive, what you guys are about, and where you guys meet and such?
Yeah. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, all the council members, and Mayor, and everyone for being here. And, you know, it's just amazing to see what God is doing in, with Hope Alive. And, you know, as Councilmember Benavidez said, is that we've been involved with the city and with the community for, for some time now, and especially with the school district, and, and doing clubs, and nonprofit things, after-school clubs, homework things, homework clubs. And it's just a joy to see how God has just opened up so many doors for us. And then here recently, in February 16th, we had our very first Sunday service. And we're meeting over at, at a, at a local school, Mendez Intermediate, which is on the corner of Bristol and 17th Street. And our very first service, we had over 500 people that showed up. And, and so that was like, whoa, you know, really neat to see how God is just doing these things. But, you know, our whole motto, and our vision as a church, you know, everybody involved primarily is from Santa Ana. And so our motto is really, you know, from Santa Ana, in Santa Ana, with Santa Ana, and for the city of Santa Ana. And we really, truly believe that God's got a great plan for the city. And, and we're starting to see a lot of fruit, a lot of neat things happening, you know, as other churches being birthed out of here, and, and, you know, here in the city of Santa Ana, to make a difference. And our whole desire really is to come alongside of our wonderful city of Santa Ana as an asset, and to, to be ministers, to be servants, just as I got to meet the, the new police chief, and I said, it's, it's going to be fun, co-laboring with you, and serving the city of Santa Ana. On different fronts, yes, but nonetheless, we're still here to serve the city of Santa Ana. And so it's just a great joy. I just want to thank you for just inviting.
Thanks. Thank you, Tommy. And, and you meet at 11 o'clock, right? Go ahead and hold off a little bit. 11 o'clock on Sunday mornings over at Mendez. Good deal. We have, I want to invite my, my friend Gerardo, G, Pastor G, as he's affectionately referred to. Gerardo and I go back, way back, about at least 10, 12 or so years ago. He landed here in Santana a few years after I did. And like me, crazy idea of just, just coming and working with our young people, mentoring kids. We took kids to camp together, and some of the toughest neighborhoods in Santana. And again, here within the last few months, stepped out and, and decided that he wanted to. It's, it's a big responsibility and a big charge to, to go on, launch out on a new endeavor, and stepped out to, to start a new church community here in Santana as well. So I wanted to share a little bit about Mariners Santana, Gerardo.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Well, it is, it is a true privilege to be here tonight, and to be invited by the council, and to be able to address him, and the, and the mayor as well, and listen to you folks. I, I'm really excited about what, what God is doing in the city, on all fronts. You know, this, this Mariners Church thing is, is interesting piece. We have, it's a network of about five different churches that are all over Orange County, and this Mariners Church Santana is the newest one. But it's new to the city in the sense of, we launched just on April 20th of this year, on Easter, on Easter Sunday. But, but we have a much richer history than just that. We've actually, as a church, we've been here for about 20, 25 years, working in some of the hardest neighborhoods, working, and being able to see and be a part of a, a transformation of a neighborhood there on, on Minister Street, in that Cornerstone Village. So we've, we've, we've had the, the honor and the privilege of partnering with families there around issues of education, of immigration, of, of healthcare, and all these, on all these fronts. So we're able to partner with those families and really see them be the change agents in their communities. You see that, that neighborhood, Cornerstone Village, our Minister Street and Standard, completely changed from, from the way it was before. So we, we are extremely honored. It really is, the work that we're doing, and now that we're launching this Mariners Church Santana, is an outburst of what has already been doing, we've already been working on. So it is a, it is a complete, we, I am honored to join so many other faith, faith leaders in our city, to continue to do the work that we're doing. There can never, there can never be too much. There's so much to do. And I love, I, I love to sit in the, in the beauty of our city, but also recognize the pain that there's, there is as well. So we're hoping to mobilize anybody who comes to our, to our place, which we actually meet at the Dalhuy Center. We're extremely excited about that partnership and what that means. They've been doing incredible work over 40 years in, in the city as well. So we get to partner with them. We meet there on Sunday mornings at 11:00 a.m. But we're really about not an opportunity for us to get together on a Sunday morning where we can warm some chairs, but really, how do we, how do we mobilize an army of people to continue to, to link arms with many of you, and, and the councilmen, and also many forth, to change our city. So, thanks.
Thank you, man. Thank you, Gerardo. Now, last, we have here New Song Church Santana, and a group of friends as well, that, that are close to my heart as well. Couple of years ago, there was actually some, some efforts by New Song, and I, I worked with New Song years ago, and a couple of years back, reconnected. And a couple of years ago, there was a interest, as New Song has a heart for the arts, to acquire the Santora Arts Building. And it became somewhat of a controversial deal. And the irony is that some of the artists didn't necessarily to, like too much the idea of, of a church going in and potentially buying this building. I think there were some good relationships that were built and discussion during that process, to the point that when it didn't work out quite between the buyer and seller for that, that purchase to come together, some folks here from Santana that had gotten a new song were a bit disappointed. That didn't work out after all. In fact, just about two, three months ago, one of the artists that was a part of some of those discussions early on, came and spoke, and, and here at the council, council meeting, and described himself, I believe, either atheist or agnostic, I'm not sure right now. But he mentioned, you know, maybe the whole idea of this New Song Church coming in was not a bad idea after all. Maybe what we needed, a little bit more Christian love within our, our community. So that, it was very moving for me to be able to hear that. And one of the things with, with New Song, as I mentioned, I reconnected a couple of years ago, you know, as you hear about the different churches and church communities, oftentimes, we, we think about having a dress up, to, to go to a church, maybe, or, or, you know, that churches, and passing the plate, and you have to go in, have to dress up, have to go in, and they're going to take my money from me. Or, or just a judgmental even perspective, maybe sometimes, that, that folks might have of church, and or churches. But, you know, reality is that at least with these three congregations and gatherings here, and I, I mentioned reconnecting with New Song a couple of years ago, it's a very, very different than, than any of that. And to share a little bit personally, since we're here just amongst friends, right? A couple of years back, my, my father passed away. It was a really tough time for me several years back. Couple of years after that, I went through a divorce, very, very difficult, lonely and broken time for me. And connecting with some of my friends in New Song, there was a period of, of healing that, that took place personally. So I know at this place, and these churches are a place where, where they are a place for broken people, for hurting people, for, for people that are struggling. And we all, at the end of the day, face challenges in life. And so just want to encourage folks to, you know, be open to what might, potentially connecting, and, and looking into what, what these congregations are talking about. But if I want to, if, if one of you can maybe share a little bit about New Song, and where you all meet, and what's going on there.
Well, after 20 years of partnering with various ministries and organizations here in the city of Santa Ana, it just feels good to finally have a permanent home here in the city, and to be a part of the community in a more tangible way. We're excited about the future of Santa Ana. That's why we want to be here. We believe in the future of Santa Ana. We look forward to partnering with the city, and with the various civic organizations and community organizations, to serve the needs of the city. With me today is Lambert Low, who is the site director of our Santa Ana location. We recently just acquired the, what was the facility of First Baptist Church on 1010 17th Street. And we're actually calling it now, rather than a church title, we're calling it the 1010 Center. And it's because we really want the facility to be perceived as a community asset. We look forward to partnering with the city, and with different organizations in the city, and that, that facility will be, become one that is used by members of the community, and that people will feel welcome there. Once again, we just, we believe in the city. We're excited to be here. As an indication of that, currently, Nova Academy, which is a public charter school, high school with 450 students, meets on our campus. And that's just an indication of how we feel about connecting with the community and being a part of it. We, we meet on Sunday morning at 9:00 and 10:30 at the campus. And so feel free to, to join us any day. And once again, it's great to be here.
Thank you, Tom. I'm going to ask Lambert, actually, if you want to introduce yourself as well, share a little bit more. I know you're the new guy here specifically at the Santa Ana site.
Just before I begin, I went to school with this guy. And he was the real deal back then, and he's the real deal now. Every time I saw him on campus, there was something special about him. And here he is today. I just want to say, if you believe or not in God, and you just witnessed a miracle, four pastors here, and keeping it under five minutes, is a miracle. So, and neither of us taking an offering. So you witnessed a miracle. You're, no, we're just here to serve the community, and so glad to be here. So that's, that's all I want to say.
Great. Good, good word there, Lambert. You know, and before I present these certificates of recognition and your grand opening, you know, it, it does come with a little bit of strings attached. And I'll, I'll share with you what that is. Councilwoman Martinez, a couple of months ago, we're actually here, there was another pastor that was, was present. And she challenged both Pastor Gil Oliver and myself to look into this effort in the city of Compton, called the Compton Initiative. So I was, she said, you know, there's a lot of good things going on out there, churches coming together, serving the community. So, so I took her up on the challenge to go look into this. So, so this last Saturday morning, Councilwoman Martinez and I went out to the city of Compton, and we joined up with about 1,200, 1,200 to 1,500 other volunteers that were coming together, primarily churches coming together from throughout the city. And they went out and were serving in 23 different locations. They're painting wall. We actually painted some walls over in, in a Compton High School. There were some, some homes of some seniors and lower-income families that were being painted, a community garden, neighborhood cleanup. There was, there was a number of different things throughout the, the city. And that, that was the real deal. That was, you know, churches coming together, saying, you know, we're here not just for you to come on Sunday morning, but us to go out there and truly roll up our sleeves and love and serve your city. So that's our hope and our dream for churches here in Santana, to come together, join, lock arms, and, and serve our community. So we welcome you, and we hope that we'll be able to see you out there in our, in our community.
Very soon, we'll have the Santa Ana Initiative, right?
That's right. All right. So, so here, on behalf of the, the Mayor and City Council, Pastor Tommy, want to extend to you the certificate of, of recognition in your grand opening. Congratulations. And Pastor G, as well, on behalf of the Mayor and City Council, congratulations. Your grand opening, Mariners Church Santana. And Lambert, and Tom, if you would, join me here, and I want to recognize you in direct, in the grand opening of New Song Church Santana, our 1010 17th Street. Thank you, and welcome to the city.
Now, I'm going to introduce Councilwoman Michelle Martinez, recognizing the Orange County Bike Coalition for Bike Month here in Santa Ana. If you can please come on forward.
Come on, Stacy and Bill. I see your cell phone down there, but we'll get it. As Bill and Stacy come up, I have the great honor of really proclaiming Bike Month in Santa Ana to the Orange County Bike Coalition. And, you know, four years ago or so ago, I started on this journey, and I started riding a bicycle for the first time. I think the last time I rode a bicycle, I was probably like nine or 10 years old. And as I worked for the Eli Home in Anaheim, there was a Bike to Work Week through OCTA, and I was invited. And I was like, well, I don't even have a bike. I haven't ridden a bike since I was 10. And so what I did, I purchased a bike at the Eli Home. They have a, kind of like a goodwill there. And I got a really nice bike for $100, and I purchased a helmet. And I rode my bike all week from Santa Ana to Anaheim. And let me tell you, what an experience. I almost died four times. And, you know, and that's when I became an advocate. And I realized that here in the city of Santana, people don't just walk and bike or take public transportation for recreational purposes. They do it because they have to, because they don't own a vehicle. They have to walk to a bus stop to take the bus to work. They ride their bicycles to the bus. And so we, as a city, need to be more cognizant, as we have more bikers in our community, to be, making sure that we provide safe facilities. And the Orange County Bike Coalition has been at this for a very long time. And their commitment, not only here just in the city of Santa Ana, but of all of Orange County. I'm going to let them share some of their accomplishments, because I don't want to take away from the Orange County Bike Coalition. And I've had the opportunity, I think for the past four years, I met Bill four years ago for the first time at the rally at OCTA, which will be next week on May 15th, and I'll certainly will be there as well. But the city of Santa Ana tomorrow, it's hosting its very first Bike to Work Week tomorrow from the Santa Ana Train Station. And I hope that you will join our city manager, David Cavassos, and myself. And I now hear that Councilman Sarmiento will be joining us on that bike ride. Is that a true statement?
I think it is.
All right. Vince is joining us. And so I'll be taking him an extra bike. And we will be starting off at the Santa Ana Train Station about 8:00 a.m., and heading over here to the Positive Flags. And it's about one mile. And so we're encouraging not only our city employees, the Civic Center employees, but our residents as well. This is a lifestyle that we want to incorporate here in the city. It's just not something, because it's Bike to Work Month, or Bike to Work Week, that we want you to get out there. We, we are moving forward in a new direction with the assistance of the Orange County Bike Coalition, OCTA, and many other organizations that have realized that at the end of the day, yes, we want more bike lanes, but we want to make sure people are able to ride their bike in a safe manner. Safety comes first. And that's what we're trying to do, what we're trying to incorporate here in the city. And we're certainly very committed to doing that. So with that being said, Bill, I know you would like to share, and then I would like, also like Stacy to share. Stacy is a teacher at Spurgeon Intermediate, and just started a bike club with the Spurgeon, with one of her classes. And, you know, they're doing great work. And so I just want you guys to share a couple of the things that you're doing. Bill?
Thank you. It's an honor to be here. The Orange County Bicycle Coalition tries to work with cities all over Orange County, and some of them see bicycling as kind of a, you know, it's an elite, fun thing to do. It's a recreational thing to do. In Santa Ana, it's been experience of, a real experience of, of heart. It's really a transportation mode that is embraced by the community and needed by the community. And anything we can do to promote safer riding, riding with traffic, following traffic laws, and helping the motorists recognize- traffic laws, and helping the motorists recognize that bicycles do legally do better, actually sharing the road than riding on our sidewalks or riding on the wrong side of the street and things like that. But Michelle has been an incredible advocate of cycling, has brought Santa Ana an amazing experience and depth of experience. I had the great pleasure working with some of the youth that helped lead the kickoff of the Wellness Corridor, just, it's been over a year now, but it was a wonderful time going out and meeting those young people that are residents that are really looking at improving how all of their fellow students ride bicycles, and the, you know, we had an awful lot of officers here tonight, but enforcement is incredibly important. If everybody who didn't use a blinker got a ticket for that, they probably wouldn't do the other really stupid things they do on the road that kill us. And take the time to pull over a child and let them know that, yeah, a helmet is required, yeah, ride with traffic. Those kind of basics are wonderful opportunities to teach people.
Thank you, Bill, and before I do the wherethes of love for Stacy, just to make a couple of comments, Stacy is a huge advocate and has been actually teaching our students through KidWorks and others, some safety, you know, courses, and so, I just wanted you to share what you're doing and what you're doing at Spurgeon, and hopefully, we'll be doing a Bike to, before the end of the month, I'll be joining you with the students and doing some kind of event.
As you know, in honor of Bike to, Bike Month, tomorrow is the National Bike to School Day, but all of us are deeply involved in SBAC testing, so we're going to schedule that a few weeks later, and since tomorrow is Santa Ana's official Bike to Work Day, that will work very well with that. We just hosted, the Orange County Bike Coalition, my husband Ramon Zavala from the UCI Transportation Coordinator over there, the first Traffic Skills 101 class in the city of Santa Ana, and we trained almost 20 young cycling advocates, how to take the lane and ride with traffic and ride safely and change their tires, and so, these are the wonderful young people that Michelle and Gerardo have been, I would, don't want to say grooming, but definitely helping advocate for bicycling in their community. And like Bill said, bicycling is a transportation mode. Not this school year, but last school year, I rode my bicycle to school, 13 miles one way, every single day of the school year. I pulled it off in rain or shine, just to prove to myself I could do it, and then I tried to ride two or three days a week. And now, we have a bike club at Spurgeon and working with the Bicycle Tree in Santa Ana, your newest bicycle co-op. The city of Long Beach is jealous, I just went to something and they said, "Oh, you have a bike co-op." And 16 of my students from Spurgeon are taking an eight-week course to learn everything about the bike, they are building the bike, when they're done with the program, they get a keep the bike, a helmet, a brand-new lock and lights, and so, the next generation is ready to go. Thank you.
And we're looking for, we've been waiting for a Ciclavia in Orange County, and Santa Ana is going to have one, so.
October 5th, save the date, Somos, yes. So, whereas, in 1991, commuting and recreational bicyclists came together for, to form the Orange County Bike Coalition to promote bicycling as an everyday means of transportation and recreation, whereas the Orange County Bike Coalition is authorized to represent about 2,000 Orange County bicyclists who are members of the clubs, they also advocate for bicyclists, including the poor, the elderly, the children, and the entire bicycling industry. So, whereas the Month of May, National Bike Month, promoting bicycling as a means of transportation and recreation, now therefore, I, Miguel A. Polito, the mayor of the city of Santa Ana, on behalf of the city council, hereby proclaim Month of May as Bike Month in Santa Ana.
Thank you very much.
One quick thing about Michelle Martinez, you guys have to know how honored she is with the Orange County community. The Orange County Transportation Authority, at our last big meeting, officially recognized Michelle as a mover and shaker, and Santa Ana is the focus of OCTA with the new bike advocacy stuff, so.
Next, I have the great pleasure to introduce somebody that I admire and who's an amazing human being, and I think we all admire and respect tremendously, and that is Coach Scott Glab, Santa Ana High School Wrestling Team. You know, as Councilman Benavides was recognizing our faith-based community, you know, I recall in 1994 and 95, when I first got introduced to the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, and I got introduced through that, through Coach Glab, and that's how I was able to meet him. I was a student athlete, I played basketball at Santa Ana High School, and, you know, there was a summer camp at Azusa, and I'll tell you that when he introduced me to that, at first, I said, you know, "Why would I want to go to camp like that, I'm not really interested in, I mean, I just really want to play basketball," but I'll tell you that when I went onto that campus, it truly made a huge impact in my life, and I've never from that day, from that day forward, realized how important it is to believe in a higher power, and many of us, you know, as elected officials, tend not to talk about religion. And I admire my colleague, Councilman Benavides, for always being upfront about religion and his faith, and I'll tell you that our faith is important, and yes, we can be from various religious backgrounds, but at the end of the day, we all have to believe in something. And I certainly believe in Jesus Christ and God, and I'll tell you that every single day was because of that moment, when I was 14-years-old and I had the opportunity to go to that camp for a week, it made an impact in my life, and I have, I've had faith ever since. And so, with that being said, thank you, Coach Glab, for not only making a difference in my life, but hundreds of kids' lives every single day, in particular, the young men and women who have participated in your wrestling team. But what we're here today is really to, you know, this guy, come closer Scott, is a rock star, and I want Sal to come down here, because I know Sal has, you know, really participated and knows Scott very well, but Scott will be inducted into the Wrestling Hall of Fame. Let's give him a round of applause. And I see he has his entourage back there, I know a lot of the alumni, I see alumni back there and current, you know, wrestlers, and they truly, you know, I certainly understand a tremendous impact that Scott has had in their lives, and I know that there are times where Scott has been frustrated, has spoken to me about, "What do we do, how do we get the parents more involved, etc.?" But he's never given up. He has never given up on our kids, and you know what they've made, that has made the biggest difference in a lot of their lives, and I'll tell you personally, four of my young cousins, who, two of them now have joined the military and were part of his wrestling team, and certainly made a huge impact in their lives, and I know he knows who I'm talking about, whether it be Danny, Sandy, Sammy, you know, for them to, you know, now be young adults in the military, you know, serving, you know, their country, I believe it was because of wrestling that they're where they're at today, and because of the dedication that Scott has put into the lives of that, of not only of those students, but the parents within the Santa Ana community. I know Senator Lou Correa, his son was a wrestler, is still a wrestler, correct? His youngest son is a senior?
Junior.
A junior at Santa Ana High School now, and so, as well, you know, Senator Correa is a big believer in Scott, and so, we're very proud, I'm very proud to be, you know, recognizing Scott for his efforts and what he's been able to do. I want him to share, there's a lot of highlights of how many championships they've won, how many young people have really went into the CIF, it's amazing how many times they've qualified, over 56 times, but I want Scott to talk about that, and I would like for Sal, at this moment in time, if he can share a couple of things about Scott, and then we'll go ahead and recognize him with his award.
Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez. Something about Coach Glab is, I knew Coach Glab before he had children, and I also knew Coach Glab before he had gray hair. And let me just tell you, I used to serve with the school district, I was on the Board of Trustees there, and I used to get really frustrated because I always felt that the district could have done more for Santa Ana High School and for what Coach Glab was doing for the students there. What's very, very difficult, and people don't understand sometimes, is the amount of stress that you go through, from the bureaucracy on getting you guys to a tournament, and paying for a bus, and having to pay for a tournament, from working with the kid for a very, very long time to find out that they can no longer wrestle because they have to go work, or they have to do something else, or they move, because sometimes our families can't stay here, they have to move to different, go where the job goes. All of those things, after a while, do create some wear and tear, they really do create wear and tear. And I just want to tell all the students that are out there, the best gift you could be giving your coach right now is the applause, and, you know, hyping it up and putting him on video, because those things are the rewards that he gets to take, to see that he is making a difference, that all the sacrifice and all the hard work, and sometimes, parents can be rough, you want the parents there, but sometimes, "Why isn't my kid wrestling? He looks better than that kid." Yeah, but your kid eats a lot of mat, you can't have him out there at the time, you know, you have to explain that, but you have to go through that. On top of that, a lot of people don't know this, there's some people that are jealous of Coach Glab, and when people are jealous of Coach Glab, then they start to say negative things about Coach Glab, which eventually, he's a nice guy, I know he looks like he can wrestle a couple of dudes at once, but he's a tough little teddy bear on the inside, who has emotions and he's sensitive, but the reality is, he takes all those in for you, for you. The only advice I can give you students is the best way to support Coach Glab, to continue to have him serve this community, because we need him, is for you to always give back. When it's time to run a tournament, when it's time to coach kids that need extra work, that's where your support comes in, is please give back. So, I'm honored, Coach Glab, and I think that no other individual could be a better person to go into the Hall of Fame than this superstar that we have here in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Last time I was here, Sal wanted to go takedowns, but I don't think you want to see us in singlets. And, so I understand the city manager is also a former wrestler, so we can do like a tag team. No, it's kind of a cliche, but it takes a village to raise a child, and I just want to thank the city and all your support and help. You've helped me host events like car shows, and I did a wrestling program through the Parks and Rec, and I look up here at the council, and each and every one of you have supported me or attended an event, or helped the wrestling program somewhere down the line in the last 24 years, and just a heartfelt thank you for all you've done, and when, you know, a life's saved, or we've turned one around at Santa Ana High School, you've made a difference as well. So, remember, you're making an impact on these youth, as well as the teachers and coaches at Santa Ana High School, and it's fantastic to see, you know, from, Michelle is a little rough around the edges in high school, and, but it's fantastic to see where you've come and how great you're doing, and I'm just so very proud of you, and I didn't know that story about FCA, I knew you attended, but I'm really pleased to hear that, that's helped make an impact. One last thing, we do have an FCA Wrestling Club at Santa Ana High School on Tuesdays and Thursdays at six o'clock, it is free, and it's from 4:00 to 14:00, and we have about 45 kids in attendance, girls and boys. Girls wrestling is on the rise, we have a strong girls wrestling program, third in the state last year, 22 girls finished the season, so, it's a fantastic sport and builds a lot of character, and once again, I just thank you all for your support.
I'd like to give you the certificate of recognition awarded to Scott Glab in recognition of your commitment to wrestling, and thank you for the many years of service to the sports of wrestling.
And if we have representatives here from the Orange County Fire Authority, please come on down, if not, I believe he's going to be making a recognition of wildfire awareness week. Councilman Reyna.
Yes, all right. It's my pleasure to be able to utilize this time to be able to make a proclamation of this week being a wildfire awareness week. You frequently hear me say that we live in a desert, please conserve water, and this is exactly, goes right into some of those aspects. For those that may not be aware, Orange County experienced extremely dry periods with low humidity, which moves us in a higher vulnerability for fire, and so, we really want to take precautions about that. Homeowners should really be recognized as the importance of high risk with wildfires, and should strive to be safe and utilize proactive strategies. Fire Awareness Week is a collaboration between California fire agencies, partners, communities, in order to prevent wildfires and increase public safety. This week is wildfire awareness, and it's my pleasure to recognize the Orange County Fire Authority with this proclamation, but before I do, I'm going to ask a few words from our division chief, Devin Leonard, if you'd like to share a few words.
Great, thank you very much. My name's Devin Leonard, I'm the division chief assigned to Orange County Fire Authority's Division Six, which is the city of Santa Ana. I've been assigned to this position now for a grand total of two days. So, I'm glad to meet all you folks tonight, I'm glad to meet the mayor, the city council, city staff, most importantly, the citizens, and thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to talk about the proclamation tonight. A few years ago, in 2006, 2007, we had some devastating fires start in Orange County, we had the freeway fire, which consumed 29,000 acres of wildland, and a couple of years later, we had the freeway, I'm sorry, the Santiago Fire was the first one, and then the freeway fire, just a couple of years later, which destroyed 200 of your neighbors' homes. So, how does that affect Santa Ana? Well, our residents, our staff, the city staff, we just, we're 20 minutes, 30 minutes from that coastal interface, we're 20 minutes, 30 minutes from the interface with the Cleveland National Forest, we all need to be on heightened awareness when we get out there, because any one of us could be the person that could stop that wildfire or prevent it. So, thank you very much to the city for recognizing it tonight and helping us get through this next year.
Absolutely, absolutely, so, let me get here, the city of Santa Ana proclamation recognizes wildfire awareness week. Governor Jerry Brown in the California Office of Emerging Services has designated this full week, May 4th through the 10th, as wildfire awareness week. Therefore, the city of Santa Ana, myself and the mayor of the city of Santa Ana, would like to present the Orange County Fire Authority with this proclamation. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Reyna, and now I'm going to direct our attention to the city council agenda and ask the city attorney if there's anything to report out. Is Sonia next door?
Righty.
Alrighty. If you can just, anything to report out of closed session, please, Madam City Attorney.
Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, we do have two reportable items this evening, one is in the matter of Robert Faster versus the city of Santa Ana on a workers' compensation matter, the city council unanimously voted to settle this matter for $34,000. There is a second matter, in the matter of James Costello versus the city of Santa Ana, for a total of five different claims, the city has authorized settlement in total of all those claims in the amount of $242,046 approved by unanimous vote of council.
Thank you for that, and now I'm going to direct our attention to public comment, and I'm going to first call on Connie Hamilton, followed by Albert Castillo.
Good afternoon, mayor and council, I just wanted to say a few things, this will be a long evening, so I will, I will make this brief. First, I want to say that I think Santa Ana's making a lot of good decisions, kudos to them. Carlos Rojas for chief, I've known him for years, and for those citizens that don't know him, he's a good man, a good man, strong, but a very good, sincere person, and that was an excellent choice. Also, on the Transportation Commission, I understand that Carl Benninger is on his way for that, that's another wonderful choice. As most of you know, I've worked with Carl Benninger on the COMLink board, and he's a very good, good choice for that position. I also wanted to mention that Connect to Council will be having their debates this election year, I think you remember last time. This time it'll be September the 17th at the Rancho Santiago Boardroom, and I understand that council positions two, four, and six are up this year, and also, the mayor, again, for two years. So, that'll begin, we're also going to partner with the Youth and Government Organization, we're going to do a debate or forum for Santa Ana Unified Candidates, and I understand that the chamber is going to be doing something for perhaps senate and perhaps assembly, the
We had our annual May Day March on May 1st, a community bike ride from Theo Lacy to the city jail on May 3rd, and El Dia del Niño Keep Our Families Together event on April 27th. Our families are being separated by your policies, which must change. It started on 2006, you sought to make a profit by housing immigration detainees in the city jail. In 2009, you increased the number of beds so you could make even more money. We condemn this cynical attempt to take advantage of a vulnerable segment of the population. You have not been forthcoming with your jail profitability report. We have waited over a year. Where's the report? We have made repeated attempts to communicate with you to better understand the jail problem, and you have been uncooperative. We need transparency in order to balance the city budget in the interest of all residents. We believe it is in the best interest of the community to have federal and local policies that promote family unity. According to internal memos recently obtained by OC Weekly, you're planning on making even more money from the ICE contract instead of discontinuing it. We want the city of Santa Ana to stop collaborating with ICE. We must pass an ordinance to make sure that this stops. We want the city of Santa Ana to stop collaborating with ICE. You can see us here tonight with our art and science. People, please, if you are here to support families without borders, please stand up. Do you see us here? Why do you keep collaborating with ICE? We are not criminals. We are not merchandise to be held for your profit. We want families without borders, human rights, no broken ties. We call upon you to, first, release the jail profitability report, second, pass this ordinance, and, third, discontinue your current efforts to extend and make even more money from this, the ICE contract. Thanks.
Thank you, Sylvia Hernandez. Scott Sink, followed by Jose Hernandez.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Chief Rojas on his new appointment, and I'm hoping that he will be able to implement a more coherent policy in terms of ICE collaboration. I've heard comments from the council sympathetic to the struggles of undocumented families. For example, particularly Councilman Tinajero, I've heard you recognize that many families are mixed, often containing spouses with different immigration statuses, and children whose status often varies between siblings and indeed from their parent's status. You understand that a deportation rips a family apart. Last August, Santana Police implemented Order Number 2.13, which allows officers to not automatically send fingerprints of people they come in contact with to ICE. The intent of this policy, along with the Statewide Trust Act, in effect since January, is to avoid sending low-level suspects into ICE custody. We have also worked together to reduce the number of cars unfairly taken from undocumented drivers. Hence, I am puzzled, I am disturbed by the decision to directly participate in the deportation process. You appear to be reducing deportations with the right hand, but increasing deportations with the left. The apparent rationale is to make a profit by charging ICE $82 per DM per detainee. Ironically, this scheme has backfired, costing the city over $9 million per year, according to internal memos recently obtained by the OC Weekly. We're still waiting for disclosure of the jail profitability report, but from what we've seen so far, it appears that it's been a financial mess ever since the city signed its contract with ICE in 2006. Hence, the recently published strategic plan pledged to, quote, "modify the Santana jail business model to make it, quote, 'fiscally sound.'" But we're here tonight to say that human families are not commodities for your business model. I repeat, we are human beings, we are not commodities for your business model. Even if you were able to get more money for holding undocumented people, it would still be a failed project. Any business based on profiting by causing human suffering is a failure. In the meantime, according to memos dated from December 2000 city, the city has been in communication with at least four different private prison contractors. Dirty, this is a dirty business, you need to get out of the deportation business. We need a new ordinance, such as the one adopted by Santa Clara County in 2011, in order to prevent any more collaboration with ICE. I would like to share you my favorite part, share with you my favorite part of your current contract that states, "This agreement shall remain in effect indefinitely unless terminated in writing by either party, 121 days in advance of the effective date of formal termination." So I would like to request that you begin this 120-day process immediately. And in conclusion, I understand Chief Rojas is going to be flown to Washington, D.C.
If you could please conclude, Scott, your time is up.
To meet with ICE officials, instead of asking for more detention fees, we want him to tell them to stop the deportations. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose Hernandez, followed by Jeffrey Hans. And then after that, Madeline Spencer. And then if we could have the translator, because after that is Apolonio Cortez. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, mayor, city council. I also want to congratulate Chief Rojas. I personally am, you know, I'm a believer, as some of you have shared, I'm an optimist. I believe in people. I genuinely think that inherently we're made to do good things, but, you know, political struggles and things that are sometimes out of our hands force us into situations where we do things that are not the right thing to do. But I recently saw that the goal for our new chief is to increase the number of officers, and with all due respect, considering how big a chunk the police department already takes, I hardly think that it's at the top of our priorities of this city to increase the number of police officers. How about a better goal? How about less youth incarceration rates? Better relationship between the community and the police department? Safer neighborhoods? Better solution with a huge, a better solution with the huge expense that is the jail in this city's budget? At the end, the profiteering from a broken immigration system? So there's, that's, there's so many better goals that we could have. So it matters little when you're the first Latino chief if this city continues to use and profit from the pain and suffering of immigrant communities, partaking in the exploitation of the desperate and vulnerable people. I've heard it expressed by the police, how do you think we're going to cover the debt from the jail? I don't know what the answer is, but it's definitely not okay with an all-Latino council, Latino mayor, chief, city manager, et cetera, that we participate in this business of legalized human trafficking any longer. The immigration detentions, profiteering, it is shameful, morally and spiritually wrong. It's not a budgeting issue, it's a human rights issue. I wish that the goal of this all-Latino representative body is to use all your God-given talent, energy, creativity, to figure out a solution that does not involve further enslaving our hermanos and our hermanas. This is the human rights issue of our day, and what a glorious day will be if this city takes a lead locally on this issue that is breaking the trust of our communities and fracturing the web that keeps us together nationally, forcing our kids to grow up fatherless and motherless. So I stand in solidarity with others in the community to say, "Stop deportation, stop the profiteering, alto a la polimiga." We are not for sale. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey, are you here? And after that, Madeline Spencer. Welcome, Jeff, how are you?
Hi there. Council, staff, my name's Jeffrey Hall. I'm here in support of 65A, the funding of the strategic plan. You know, this community, there's a lot of different roles and different focuses as we see tonight, but truly, like any good community, when we all come together, that's when our greatest strength and our greatest achievements come out. This is something that was vetted out and spent, you know, a year of community building, coming together to create these focuses and goals, and I'm just here to say, "Let's go ahead and fund it." So I do want to commend the council for its leadership. You know, it's, it's been, it's been heard and it's been said that, you know, that the kind of leadership and focus that our city has right now in making bold decisions and making presumably the right, right decisions in a lot of different angles when it comes to business, when it comes to support and community, has been extremely noticed, and it's been noticed in the development community, and economically you see a lot more developers and a lot more people, even, even small businesses like myself, willing to make that, that risk and that sacrifice to invest in this town. So once again, thank you all, and thank you for my consideration.
Thank you. Madeline, come on down, and then Apolonio, and then Bret C. May.
Good evening, council, city staff. I actually wanted to start, I just wanted to talk about consistency. And from Rhode Island, the governor, Chaffee, actually said that trust is built with consistency. And there's a lot of inconsistency that I've seen for a long time, and I'm speaking as a resident tonight, and I haven't been able to do that for a long time, but some of the things that I wanted to talk about is, Mr. McPherson, who's a tax administrator from Oakland, shows his city bringing in 1.4 million in taxes, which is nearly 3% of all the business taxes collected by the city in the general fund revenue. Mayor Chuck Reed of San Jose collects 2.5 million in taxes from the 100 dispensaries that have opened in the city. In the last series of months, there have been a lot of different people who have talked here in council and outside about the dispensaries that are in our city. I've seen the Seedless at the Yoast video, marketing the actual, like, kind of like a marijuana convention, and I also have seen, like, new dispensaries popping up all over the place. I noticed Mr. Polito's comment to the elderly women, woman here, who was talking about Gary Avenue and how their area is being taken over by dispensaries. I've also heard from the South Main Merchants that there are, there's a dispensary that popped up on their street, and there's dispensaries all over the place. Now, I understand that it might be very lucrative for the city to have these dispensaries, because as you just heard from Oakland and others, that there's millions of dollars of taxes coming in. I don't know how easy it is for the dispensaries to be here, but I do know that in different places, like in Europe, we have, there's a Camden Street for that, there's Red Light District in Amsterdam, and there's different things, and if they don't get mixed up with the community, then it might be helpful to not have that. There's also, actually, my, I have so many different things that I want to talk about, but I can't, but that's one of them that I would really like to know what's being done, and I feel that it's inconsistent to, for instance, I don't know how many youth here get taken in for marijuana charges, but I do know that if the city is selling it and letting people sell it here, and they're also incarcerating people for it, that that's like wiping off blood with blood, and I think that it's bad practice, it's inconsistent. So that's one thing that I just wanted to talk about.
Thank you, Madeline. Apolonio, are you here? Come on down, Apolonio, and then Bret C. May.
Buenas tardes, members of the council, personal of the city. My name is Apolonio Cortez, I'm resident of Santa Ana, I'm a member of Sacred. The reason of my participation tonight is to remind you of the importance of the priorities of the community in the strategic plan. Sacred and building healthy communities has worked hard to integrate the voices of the community and find the priorities that are of highest importance for the city. The organizations that support us, the businesses that support us, and the residents that make up, make us up, we believe on the following priorities that need, must be kept, and monies must be assigned. coming together to create these focuses and goals. And just here to say, let's, let's go ahead and fund it. So I do want to commend the council for its leadership. You know, it's, it's been, it's been heard and it's been said that, you know, that the kind of leadership and focus that our city has right now in making bold decisions and, and making presumably the right, right decisions in a lot of different angles when it comes to business, when it comes to support and community, has been extremely noticed. And it's been noticed in the development community. And economically, you see a lot more developers and a lot more people, even, even small businesses like myself, willing to make that, that risk and that sacrifice to, to invest in this town. So once again, thank you all, and thank you for my consideration.
Thank you. Madeline, come on down. And then Apolonio, and then Bret C. May.
Good evening, council, city staff. I actually wanted to start, I just wanted to talk about consistency. And from Rhode Island, the Governor Chaffee actually said that trust is built with consistency. And there's a lot of inconsistency that I've seen for a long time. And I'm speaking as a resident tonight, and I haven't been able to do that for a long time. But some of the things that I wanted to talk about is Mr. McPherson, who's a tax administrator from Oakland, shows his city bringing in 1.4 million in taxes, which is nearly 3% of all the business taxes collected by the city in the general fund revenue. Mayor Chuck Reed of San Jose collects 2.5 million in taxes from the 100 dispensaries that have opened in the city. In the last series of months, there have been a lot of different people who have talked here in council and outside about the dispensaries that are in our city. I've seen the Seedless at the Yoast video, marketing the actual, like, kind of like a marijuana convention. And I also have seen, like, new dispensaries popping up all over the place. I noticed Mr. Polito's comment to the elderly women, woman here, who was talking about Gary Avenue and how their area is being taken over by dispensaries. I've also heard from the South Main Merchants that there are, there's a dispensary that popped up on their street, and there's dispensaries all over the place. Now, I understand that it might be very lucrative for the city to have these dispensaries, because as you just heard from Oakland and others, that there's millions of dollars of taxes coming in. I don't know how easy it is for the dispensaries to be here, but I do know that in different places, like in Europe, we have, there's a Camden Street for that. There's Red Light District in Amsterdam, and there's different things. And if they don't get mixed up with the community, then it might be helpful to not have that. There's also, actually, my, I have so many different things that I want to talk about, but I can't, but that's one of them that I would really like to know what's being done. And I feel that it's inconsistent to, for instance, I don't know how many youth here get taken in for marijuana charges, but I do know that if the city is selling it and letting people sell it here, and they're also incarcerating people for it, that that's like wiping off blood with blood. And I think that it's bad practice. It's inconsistent. So that's one thing that I just wanted to talk about.
Thank you, Madeline. Apolonio, are you here? Come on down, Apolonio, and then Bret C. May.
Buenas tardes, members of the Consilio, personal de la ciudad. Mi nombre es Apolonio Cortez. Soy residente de la Ciudad de Santana, miembro de Sacred. El motivo de mi participación el día de hoy es para recordarles la importancia de las prioridades de la comunidad en el Plan Estratégico. Sacred y construyendo comunidades saludables ha trabajado arduamente para integrar las voces de la comunidad y encontrar las prioridades más importantes para la ciudad. Las organizaciones que nos avalan, los negocios que nos apoyan y los residentes que nos conforman, creemos que los siguientes prioridades deben, deben mantener, deben mantener fondos en los siguientes cinco años, como son arte, arte y cultura, jóvenes, seguridad, salud, inclusión, acceso a recursos, acceso a recursos comunitarios, desarrollo activo. Desde su posición ustedes tienen el poder de hacer historia y dejar un buen legado para la comunidad. Una parte crucial de este legado es asignar fondos en estas prioridades. Recuerden que somos protagonistas en hacer historia en nuestra ciudad. Y queremos continuar en esta misma relación para seguir trabajando.
Good evening. My name is Apolonio Cortez. I'm resident of Santa Ana and I'm member of Sacred. The reason of my participation tonight is to remind you of the importance of the priorities of the community in the strategic plan. Sacred and building healthy communities has worked hard to integrate the voices of the community and find the priorities that are of highest importance for the city. The organizations that support us, the businesses that support us, and the residents that make up, make us up, we believe on the following priorities that need, must be kept and monies must be assigned for the next five years. Arts and culture, youth, safety, inclusion, access to community resources, and equal development. Since your position, you're in the unique, you have the unique power to make history and to have a legacy for the community. A crucial part of this legacy is to assign monies to these priorities. Remember that we are the protagonists in the, in the history that we're making in our city. We want to continue this relationship, working together with you. Thank you.
Bret C. May, followed by Sharon Barlow. And after that, the guy who I've all been waiting for, Adolfo Lopez. Adolfo, get ready.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Bret C. May, and I came to speak for the voice, for the Voice List. And I wrote these things, and I hope that you can understand me. This past Thursday, I marched with a group of people for ICE. And the police helped. There was a small incident, and they helped make it a success. For that, I say thank you. Now, regarding what's going on, ICE is not looking at a person how they are. They're looking at the color and the pocketbook, right? They're looking at the Latinos as criminals. And if you can remember, a long time ago during World War II, the Latinos who wore suit suits were called gangsters or bad people. The Japanese were put in concentration camps here in California. Back East, the Germans were also mistreated. Now, we're undocumented people. They're here to help and make better their lives and their children. Let's make this city the first one to help the community and stop all these things that are happening. And don't forget the black people. They're also discriminated. And there are Latinos, black people. That's why I mentioned them. Oh, yeah, before I close, I want to say thank you to Officer Culas, who helped save Santos, a homeless man, by talking him out of doing bodily harm to himself, and just giving him a friendly smile and three cheeseburgers. That helped bring him down. So, sirs, ladies, please vote, and let's stop these things. We all have people in our background who were illegal, came to this country, and look where you're at. Because of your families who helped get you where you're at today, let's help them remember where they're going to be in several years, the kids. I'm talking about the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Barlow, followed by Adolfo Lopez, and then Bob Quinn.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city manager and staff. I just want to begin by saying thank you to council members Sarmiento and Martinez, and of course, our city manager and a lot of staff that came out to our cleanup day and for the South Main Merchants on the South Main Corridor. And I'm speaking today on behalf of the merchants of the South Main Street Corridor there in thanking you all for putting us on the strategic plan, putting our corridor on the strategic plan. But also, as you know, it's on the unfunded side. And today, we are here to ask that it be funded, please. On October 5th, you are having the Sicla Villa on our Main Street Corridor. We would love to be able, at that time, when you are bringing in people from all over, not just the neighborhoods, but from all over. And they're going to be seeing this corridor and how neglected it's been. I ask you to be able to share that day, the funding of this corridor, and for people to be able to share with them also the change that is coming to that corridor by funding it. So that's what we want to promote, that day, October 5th, that people, when they come back the following year, because this is going to be a great event, and people are going to want to see it happen again, that they're going to start seeing change on that corridor. So thank you for listening, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Sharon. And thank you for the work that you're doing, leading the folks there on South Main. Adolfo, and then Bob Quinn. Walking slowly to the microphone is Adolfo Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I really want to congratulate everybody here, because we needed a good chief of police that knows the city. I know Chief Rojas for many, many, many years, and I know he knows what's going on in here. And I really congratulate him for that. Second, I'd like to support the strategic plan that we needed for downtown, we needed for the city, and I'm here to support that. I can give you a million reasons why, but it's kind of late, and my wife is waiting for me. Thank you so much. Bye.
Thank you, Adolfo. Bob Quinn, followed by Octavio Pina.
Good evening. I'm Bob Quinn. I'm here on behalf of myself and my son, Jason. We are the owners of the Playground Restaurant, Playground 2.0, and soon, three mini restaurants in the Fourth Street Market. Our family, well, I grew up in Garden Grove, so I always felt very, very close geographically with Santa Ana, and, you know, I'm, I'm almost a local boy. We now live in Irvine, but we are going all in, in Santa Ana. And I just, I'm so impressed with what I've seen tonight. I wanted to thank you for your leadership, and you can see it with everything that's happened tonight. I mean, fantastic new chief of police. We see new, new faith leaders coming in who, for years, have had a profound impact on our children. And I say "ours" because I care very much about them as well. Everybody who's been up here tonight, I mean, what a great city we're part of. And I just want to thank you for your vision and your leadership, and I hope my family and I are here for decades more. Thank you.
Well, I mean, thank you for the playground. That's just such an amazing addition to the city. Thank you for, and please say hi to Jason. Octavio, followed by Gemma Suarez.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor pro term, council members, city manager, staff. I'm Octavio Pina. I've been doing business in the city of Santa Ana for 25 years, 26 years now. We're here to support the five-year plan and to thank you very much for having worked with us when we were discussing the five, five-years plan and actually including the South Main Corridor in it. We're really, really appreciative of your listening to our pleads and including us in it. We have a hands-on city manager whom we welcome and we see very often, and we keep beating the drum about the South Main Corridor. We support every effort the city is making to make the city as a whole a better place. We ask you to please consider the South Main Corridor as the natural partner for downtown Santa Ana. And when we were talking about the five-year plan, it was said that it may take time, time to fund certain things, and we understood and we, we accept it. We know there is some pending business with some legal matters that may bring some money for the South Main Corridor. What we ask you is to please do whatever we can do now to improve it. The little things, the little things go a long way. Whatever we can do as far as the things we've been talking for the past two, three weeks, you know, we would really appreciate you really consider executing as soon as possible. Again, we, we are very, very thankful to you for including the South Main Corridor on the five-year plan. The South Main Corridor needs funding. We know it may take some time, but we can, there are things that can be done right now, and we will appreciate that you consider executing as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for your work as well with the South Main Merch Association. Gemma, please go ahead, and you are the last speaker. Please go ahead, Gemma.
Okay, my name is Hema. So you pronounce it with the G like an H, just, just so you know. Yeah, so, yeah, good evening, council members. I'm here to remind you of the urgency we have to stop the ICE collaboration. I'm also here to remind you to provide us with a jail profitability report. I believe everyone should have the right not to be persecuted, the right to migrate, the right to look for work, the right to feel safe. I personally know people who live in fear just because they are undocumented. They have told me about their dreams, about buying a home, traveling, having their children go to school, and most importantly, live without fear. These people have also shared their nightmares. These nightmares are composed of raids done by ICE agents, where they are deported, and then they, they have the uncertainty of when they will reunite with their loved ones. The worst nightmares that I know of are the ones that are real life. I personally know children who have had their parents deported. Some parents have been able to come back, and some, some have not. And the children are not only able to contact their parents through the phone calls. I believe that all people deserve respect and dignity. I believe that these human rights are not negotiable. So there is no good reason why the ICE contract can be, not be canceled. If the city has a deficit, there should be other ways to solve this. You can start by sharing the jail profitability report so that the May Day Coalition can help you with, with advice. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. So with that, I'm going to direct our attention to the consent calendar and ask if council members wish to pull any items. Councilor Martinez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. 19D and 25E.
Any other items? I would entertain a motion.
I'd just like to abstain from 13F.
Do you want to state the reason?
Yes, that's a potential appointment of a youth commissioner, which happens to be my daughter.
Got it. Conflict of interest. Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion on the balance.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. 19D, Councilor Martinez, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to pull this item. I'm very supportive, just wanting to let our residents know we're taking a next step as we move forward with our greenhouse gas emissions reduction targets for inclusion of the Santa Ana Climate Action Plan. Just wanted if our public works, acting public works director can just please approach us very quickly and just share with us the targets. I, I can go ahead and come up here and share the targets, but I think it's very important that it comes from you and what our plans are to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and how that interacts with the Action Climate Plan.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council members. This is actually a very exciting moment, because what we have before you is the approval of some milestone targets. We, we would like greenhouse emissions reduction targets by, reduction by 15% of 2008 levels by 2020, and a 30% reduction from 2008 levels by 2035. If these targets are supported by the council, then we can complete the Climate Action Plan and bring it back to the council for a full presentation. But these targets are very important. As you know, the, the Climate Action Plan includes energy milestones and goals, transportation and land use, solid waste, and the waste water and water goals. So the Climate Action Plan, when it's completed, will be brought back for a council presentation. But this is very exciting. I think that we can complete the plan by the end of the calendar year. So we look forward to bringing something to you sometime in the, in the fall, before the end of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you, William. Very excited. I think this is an important milestone here for the city. I just would like for us to make sure, you know, as we look at our carbon footprint and in regards to transportation, that we align that. And I'm sure that we will continue, even though when we approve this Climate Action Plan, that we will align it with our general plan and make sure that we're on task and agreement of as, as how we move forward. And I know that you guys will continue to work together, but I just wanted to make sure, as we look at our carbon footprint and, and how we're moving forward with active transportation, I think we are already probably the best in the city as regards to our carbon footprint. I think we're going to even improve much more. And, you know, the, you know, as we look at the Sustainable Community Strategy, the reason why, you know, we're such ahead of the game, Orange County is because of the city of Santa Ana and the great work that we've done, and we need to recognize that. That you look at the Sustainable Community Strategy for all of Orange County, it is because of cities like Santa Ana, Anaheim, and Irvine that is really doing its fair share to assure that we reduce greenhouse gas emissions and we comply with the Regional Transportation Plan and a Sustainable Community Strategy through SCAG. So thank you for your efforts and your staff. I see them here. You guys are doing tremendous work, and, and I'm excited to approve this and, and look at the plan at its final stages. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. I just want to add that especially on things like the Go Local, I think it's part of what Councilor Martinez is talking about, the streetcar, that is going to have an impact on our carbon footprint, because that's all electric. And then if we can do, you know, bike stops along the different stops that the streetcar will take, so that people can ride their bike and from there get onto the, you know, electric transportation, that's the kind of stuff that's going to even lower it more. So thank you for the good work. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. 25E, Councilor Martinez.
Just very quickly, Mayor, this came before our committee, the Finance, Economic Development and Technology Committee, and I just want to give kudos to our city manager for pushing forward and moving forward, making sure that we continue to activate the downtown. You know, I think our artists and, and our business communities would be very excited as we move forward to acquire four retail kiosks. We certainly don't know what we're going to be able to, you know, what service we're going to provide. I think that's the work that our, our staff is going to work within the, within the artist village and the artists of what kind of kiosk, what's needed there. We certainly don't want to take away from the businesses that are already there and the restaurants, but I think this is a great idea as we move forward to activate the artist village and getting our artists involved and, and the rest of the community, you know, as we, as we move forward with the downtown. I think this is a positive step in the right direction, and want to thank you, Mr. City Manager and our staff, for moving us there very quickly. And I wholeheartedly support this item.
So with that, do we have a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. So that's it for the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, I believe we're now on item 55A. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. 55B, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would like to pull this item for a two-week continuance, as our staff needs to revisit this.
Why don't you just make a motion?
Oh, 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 sorry. It is the, it is the wrong item, 55B.
Why don't you just move it?
I support it. I move 55B.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Now, 55C, we've already continued it, but just for the record, I just want to make sure nobody's here, because I have public comment. Christina Rush, Robert Gonzalez, Heronimo Chavez, Veronica Rosales, Young Lee, Kim Day, John Palacio. Anybody present? If not, I'm glad we pulled it early, that way they could go home, and that's already been continued. So 55D, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, that is a motion I would like to continue for two weeks, as our staff and Mr. City Manager.
Let's get a second. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Item 55E, I would entertain a motion.
Motion. Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think, I think we're right in the middle of voting, but I do have a comment. Are, are you going to entertain?
Well, I already took the vote, but let's take a comment, please.
Look, first of all, I wanted to thank our staff for bringing this before us, and I see staff from OCTA in the audience as well, as well as our consultants that represent us. And you, Mr. Mayor, represent us on that board as a director as well. So I want to thank specifically, I believe, one of our staff attorneys in the city attorney's office, Ryan Hodges, who I believe hasn't slept for the past week, because he's been working on some of this draft EIR and some of the other legal documents that needed to be presented to the OCTA staff and board of directors. to be presented to the OCTA staff and board of directors. So please thank him, Madam City Attorney, on our behalf. And what we're doing here today is very exciting. It's hitting another milestone and taking another step that is very, very critical to this project because, as we know, up here, many of us realize that this has come before us and it's been before us since two thousand and six. And so we're getting very close to the end of the process, yet we're now in the most critical stages of this project's life. And so I'm very happy that my colleagues and I are moving this along. I know I chaired the Subcommittee on Development and Transportation and my colleagues, Council Member Martinez and Benavides, and I have addressed some of the issues already, and we saw the matters that are before us here tonight. So I just wanted to let the public know that what we're doing here tonight is supporting, actually approving the environmental review document that's out there in the Public Outreach Plan to go out to the public and reintroduce this project. We know that many in the public already are familiar with it, but we believe that it's important to continue the public engagement process and to get comments from residents and merchants that are along the alignment, but just generally to get comments from folks in the city. So we're going to be going out very soon to talk to folks about this, as well as adopting a resolution tonight that will support the designating the Transit Authority as a lead agency to own and operate the system. We will reserve a ten percent interest because I think it's important that the city continue to have a role in the operation, but a minimal role. We know that this system eventually, hopefully, will be the first leg in a very large system that circulates through the county. And, you know, it's something that I believe is going to be the first step into something very impactful here for those of us. And as, you know, as we talk about reducing carbon footprints, I think about just moving working families. And I see that it's important that we need to have public transportation including as, included as a system of efficiencies and priorities for us. And it really is the future for this city because even though it's mobility and it's transportation, it really is an economic development generator as well. So it's going to do incredible things for this city. It's going to improve the quality of life for many people who don't drive, who don't have licenses and need to get to work and need to get to different places throughout the city. So I want to, you know, wholeheartedly support this. And the last item is to also reiterate the support for the city manager as the project director for this. You know, we know that he comes to us by way of the city of Phoenix, and one of the reasons why we appointed him as city manager was because he came with tremendous transportation experience. And he helped grow and expand the airport there and worked with the Federal Transportation Authority for funding, for processing. So he's worked on much larger projects than ours, and I know that he'll be able to get us to the finish line along with our consultant, our director, and the board of directors and the staff at OCTA. So I want to thank everybody involved for this, and it's very exciting for those of us here because we finally start realizing, and hopefully the board of directors realize at the Transit Authority, that this city is a hundred percent behind this project. And we know that we were one of two cities selected for this, and we know the city of Anaheim is also rolling out their proposal for their leg of the, of their fixed guideway system. But we believe that ours is a very, very competitive one. I think, you know, when you talk about, you know, what the Obama administration would like to see, they want to help working families. They want to help introduce projects like this in communities like this where there's high ridership, where our people use buses, they use other forms of transportation like bicycles, like walking, you know, pedestrians. So this is the perfect ideal site for the introduction of mass transit, fixed guideway mass transit into this county. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to support this once again.
Thank you.
I know it's up for the vote, but I just wanted those comments.
We've already voted, but we can comment. So Councilwoman Martinez and then Mayor Protown.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I had the opportunity to be at SCAG last week and had the opportunity here, Al Zalinka, who's the, you know, who works in the city of Riverside. And the city of Riverside is doing Reconnect, you know, they're going to be doing a streetcar as well. And they had this amazing idea. They actually took a streetcar to their downtown and really showed the public and how the outreach. The outreach component is very vital, and I know we've gone through and met with various business communities, different neighborhood associations, but we still need to continue our outreach and really show what the experience is going to be like for our residents. I'm very hopeful, and now that we have our city manager as the project director, will be able to get us to the finish line. We're almost there. He's there, but he's new to this role. And so what I would like to encourage as he's now the project director is that he actually go out into the community with our consultants, introducing himself as the lead and the authority on behalf of the city of Santa Ana. You haven't reached a lot of the business community of where this possible, you know, possible streetcar is going to come through if we decide, we have to decide what route we're going to take. But there are three different alternatives. I think it's imperative that you go out there and introduce yourself. It's not only during the outreach phase of the forty-five days, but I think we need to do our due diligence. And you, as a new project director, I think it's very important that you introduce yourself and letting folks know if they do have any questions, that they certainly can count on you to answer those. And then secondly, I do want to thank Mayor Polito. Look, we do give him a hard time. And I'm one to give him a hard time out of the time. You got to hold people accountable, and I'm one of the first that will hold my colleagues accountable. He's very passionate about this, and sometimes we tend to want to control certain things. And, you know, Mayor Polito has, you know, this is his legacy, and I understand that. This is something that he's worked on for a very long time prior to us, and so I respect that. But what I also want Mayor Polito to realize is that we're all committed and that it takes a team to get us to the finish line. And you have the team here. We're committed. We want to get to that finish line. We have a city manager that wants to get us there. We have a city attorney. We can get there, but we need to show the community that we're doing it together in a unified effort, and I believe that we're there. And so you've been our champion. I thank you. As we move forward, as it goes to OCTA, you will continue to champion this, and we will get there. And so I just want to thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you for those comments. Mayor Protown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like Councilwoman Martinez stated, this is a team effort, and I just wanted to thank OCTA for deciding to move forward and own this project and to allocate the funds for this project. I talked to one of the supervisors who was very, very excited about this. The density here is, you can't deny it. We're extremely dense. And for us to not be able to have this type of transit in our community, it's, quite frankly, it's way past you. We can't do it without individuals coming to the table and working. Our mayor has been the person at OCTA pushing and trying to convince people that this is the place to put it. We brought in a wonderful city manager who's done the job in Phoenix to say, yep, we need it here, and let me reiterate and give you a different view on why we need it here. And I believe that OCTA is looking at your leadership and realizing that it's, you're the right person for this job and we can make it happen. We couldn't get to this point if it wasn't for the Cordoba Corporation, who has been working diligently to make sure that we're always ahead of the game. And I want to, you know, I have a lot of friends in Anaheim, but he wanted to make sure that our streetcar was up there in front. And so I appreciate that time and effort. And at the end, you've noticed something about our staff, our city manager's determined to hire great people. He wants only the best. Our department heads realize that he's looking for the best and they're rising, and some have already been competing at that level, but they go up to that level. The same goes with anyone who works with our city and our consultants. We expect the best. So I appreciate everybody's work. OCTA, thank you. Cordoba Corporation. Mayor, I thank you for your leadership there and this council, because at the end of the day, we all brought it together to have one strong unit up here to assure that that money's going to be well spent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We already voted, but now I feel compelled to make a comment.
I'm not forcing you.
It's hard. It's hard not to. You know, first of all, yes, this is a legacy-type project, and I very much welcome, you know, the entire team, all of my colleagues, everybody pulling together to make this happen. I think that's part of what it's going to take, as well as the work that staff is doing, and not just staff here at the city, which is very important, but also at OCTA. And in particular, I want to note that Jim Beal is here today, and he's the project director assigned to this project over at OCTA. So, you know, as a city manager, is working with Jim, that's very important. And of course, you know, George Pla is here, and, you know, right next to Kathy Higley in the back. For those folks who don't know him, you know, that's the, you know, much of the core of Cordoba Corporation. And yes, when we started the project a few years ago, I don't know if you all recall, but we were said that we are not going to be able to succeed, that we are behind, that, you know, others would pass us up. And now it turns out we're ahead of everybody else. And I do believe that right now we have a window of opportunity to get this project going. And part of the reason I'm pushing as hard as I am is that in November, we're going to lose several board members at OCTA. We just know that. There's a lot of people running for different offices, and right now, board members, I believe, are very receptive. They've been educated, and I've been around long enough to know that sometimes when council members or board members at OCTA change, you may not have the support in the future. So I kind of want to do right now what occurred over in Anaheim with Arctic. If you recall, we had several key votes, and even though the board somewhat changed, the project had so much momentum and was so far along that that momentum continued it to fruition. And now as you drive around the, you know, the fifty-seventh freeway right there by the stadium, you see the shiny new station being built. Well, that's, you know, the Anaheim, you know, Regional Intermodal Center, Transportation Center. So what I want us to do with this project is do everything we can here in the city, turn it over to OCTA, as we're beginning to do right now with this vote today. But then I want to do everything I can at OCTA to have this board take as many significant votes as possible so that after November, there's so much momentum with the project that it's going to happen and that it can't lose momentum. I saw Centerline lose momentum and die even though we already had thirty-five million dollars spent, and everybody thought, gee, it's going to happen, and it didn't. This one, we can't let it go. So I thank my colleagues, I thank staff, OCTA staff, the consultants. Let's make it happen. And with that, I don't think we have to vote again because it was already a seven-zero, but if we were to vote again, it'd be a seven-zero again. So thank you, and thank you, you know, for pulling it because I already had moved on. So let's keep going. What's the next item, Madam Clerk? Sixty-five A, I want to entertain a motion. Should I call on Councilwoman Vince Armento?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe this is a matter that was held over from the last council meeting, and I pulled it for purposes of further review. And this is obviously the strategic plan that we've all been working on for such a long time. And I want to begin by thanking staff for all the work that they've done on this. This is a very, this was a very complicated process. I think it preceded even some of the staff members that we now have on, in the organization that are working on it. This process preceded them. It's been very difficult. As we've all said many times, it's been an imperfect process because to try to get the priorities of an entire community in one document is never going to be precise. And so you make your best efforts and you try to incorporate as many opinions and comments and goals that people have. But as we know, we have a diverse community and we have diverse needs. And we don't have the luxury of saying, you know what, we have enough services and resources for economic development, or we're completely saturated with funds and support for infrastructure. We're a city that's so large that we need support in every area. So I'm very glad that we took this step forward to do this, and I know that one of my goals in this has been to be as balanced and fair as possible and to make sure that every area that was identified by our community and our staff and those of us up here, that it may, that we make sure that we fund those areas in a very balanced and fair way. So I know that staff has taken painstakingly difficult steps to bringing this for us, and it's a great first step. And I think now that it's before us, the policymakers, we have to make some value judgments as well because we can't delegate those decisions to staff. And that's something that I think we're vested by the voters here in this city to make sure that we act on everybody's, in everybody's best interests and on their behalf. And what I did in looking at this document is seeing what my views are based upon what I heard at not only the meetings that we had with the community, but people who came before us and spoke to us here at council meetings, people who sent emails and contacted us and contacted staff and wrote letters and had different forms of communication. So I coupled that with what is a city's traditional functions? What are we supposed to be doing? We're supposed to be providing resources in areas like public safety, providing youth programming, providing customer service to people who come and invest and do business in the city. All those things, I believe, are outlined, but I wanted to make sure that there was some balance and something for every goal area. And when I did see this document at first blush, I was a little disappointed that some areas were funded much less than others. So I think, again, I applaud the efforts of staff. I know that we didn't do as good a job on summarizing the responses from people who attended as we possibly could. But again, it's our first venture out, and I know that as we do this more and more, it's going to be a more perfect result, or a much more improved result. So, Mr. City Manager, I'm going to, and Madam City Attorney, I'm going to move the item with some amendments and some modifications. If you don't mind, I'll make those line item changes as we go. What I want to do is I'd like to go item by item on the Attachment A that was provided to us at the last meeting and the one, the attachment that was provided in this staff report as well. One A is fine. We'll go ahead and keep that as fifteen thousand as a one-time expenditure. I'd like to include another line item in the Community Safety section to include two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for code enforcement, and I'll explain why. Code enforcement is something that I repeatedly heard mentioned by our residents and by our merchants and stakeholders, and we know that we're desperately short of what we'd like to have. We have a city of approximately three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand residents, and we have, I think, single-digit code enforcement officers. And I know we're going to be including another four, but I think we can include at least two more based upon this additional line item entry. And before I continue, I just wanted to clarify with city staff that I'm not increasing this amount, I'm just shifting some amounts around. So it's going to stay at or below the two-point, I believe it was, was it two-point-two, two-point-three amount? So that's basically what I, what my goal is here. And so moving on to the next section, which is the Youth Education and Recreation Section, I am going to strike the allocation for one A. On two A, I'm going to move that we reduce that amount from one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand to one-hundred-thousand. On two B, I am going to request that we reduce the amount from five-hundred-thousand to four-hundred-thousand and include, when we talk about youth sports, I want to make sure that we talk about all sports. We're not talking about just baseball, football, basketball, but I want to make sure that we include as a definitional point soccer, tennis, any other sport that we see is worthy of support in the city. Two F is a, is an allocation for sports scholarships, and I'm going to reduce that amount or move that we reduce that amount from two-hundred-thousand to one-hundred-thousand. But the reason why I think this scholarship program is important, and I know that I received a communication in writing from some of my colleagues that we should remove this, is that many of our residents don't have the money to enroll themselves into any of those traditional sports. And this scholarship was a way for those students to be able to, or for those youth to be able to participate in these programs. And I think it's important that they also have some way to do this without, without having to go without participating in these programs. So this is something that I believe my council member to my right made the motion to include. Three B will remain the same at twenty thousand. And one other, the only other new item that I And one other, the only other new item that I'm including in here is 3D. And that's for an E library. And one of the things I heard often is that this city has so many youth, it's the youngest city in the war, in the, in, in, in probably the state with a median age of 27.6, and we have two libraries.
Councilmember Sarmiento, if I may for a moment, before you make the entire motion, I know you're doing a huge motion. I've had several colleagues here on the left say that they would like to consider a two-week continuance to be able to digest all this. So, what I would recommend, if, if that's a sentiment, instead of continuing with you reading it out?
And, and I think that's a great idea, Mr. Mayor. But this is what happened, is when I, and just so you know, I tried to do my due diligence and I couldn't speak to all seven or all six of my colleagues.
Correct.
Because I'm forbidden by the Brown Act, as we all are. I approached city staff and I wanted to see about how we can make these changes. And I was directed by city staff to make the motions and make the changes on the dais so we could do it publicly in front of all our residents and everybody out there. And I think that's really the only fair way we do it. But again, that's the transparent way that we've committed ourselves to do it.
And I'm not saying don't be transparent, but I'm also saying people need a chance to digest it and to understand it. So, if you want to continue to articulate where you're articulating, let's put it in some kind of a memo form so people understand it. And then let's consider a two-week continuance.
And that's what I was hoping to do, but maybe we can get some direction from our city attorney and maybe she can tell us how best to do this. Because really, these are value judgments that we all have to make. I mean, it's, it's something that we are, we are vested to, to do. I, I think we all are going to have opinions on increments, on what should be funded. And since there isn't any real clear way that this was, this was done, I don't want it to be arbitrary or random either.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. You're, you're correct. The city manager had already recommended, the staff recommendation is this. And we can't take seven different recommendations. I wouldn't know what to do with them. All we would be doing is regurgitating it back to the council. At the end of the day, the city manager recommends and you review and approve. If you have a motion, you have a right to make it. And then if the council wants to delay taking action on that, they can. But sending a memo to me, I won't know what, there's nothing for me to do with it.
Right. That's exactly why, Mr. Mayor, I decided to make the motion, so my colleagues could have an opportunity to opine.
So, go ahead and make the motion and then we will consider a substitute motion for a continuance. Because you guys want time, correct? You want to wait.
Is there a better way, Madam City Attorney, that we could do this? And I understand my, my colleagues' sentiments, but again, I couldn't communicate to them because I'm forbidden from communicating to more, to more than two of my colleagues.
You had just gotten to 3D on the E library, I think, as I had written down here. Do you have much further to go or are we order through?
I do, I do. There's some, there's some further adjustments.
You know, one of the things that, and I guess one of the things you can, you can do is you're not prohibited under the Brown Act from disseminating information.
Correct.
You're just prohibited from discussing that and coming to a collective decision outside of this process. So, you know, it's your choice and at the, at the call of the chair, you could continue to go through this. You could, if you so chose, put it in writing and distribute it to your colleagues and so they have it in hand the next time you discuss it. That really is a matter of your own process and how you wish to handle it.
Look, I'll defer to the chair and I, and I think if, if we can go ahead and put this in writing, have the clerk of the council maybe circulate it to my colleagues again. But this is a very clumsy way of doing this because if you see, we received this two weeks ago. I go back to staff and say, these are some changes I want to make. How do we communicate this to, to, to everybody? We're having a tough time. We can do things from the dais and make adjustments. If it's not the most efficient way, I just know that this is what the process is supposed to be.
There are unfortunately times, I think, as the city manager mentioned, where we work for, we work for the entire council, but we take direction from majority. So, it would be impossible for us to take your memo and make those changes before they get here. But I think now that your colleagues know you have these changes, you've communicated it to them, I think the question is, how do your colleagues wish to receive?
Well, look, as Chair, let me suggest this. Make it available to the entire community so anybody watching on TV or whatever, they want to see what we're talking about, let's put it on paper. Do a memo, it can come from the city manager, not with a city manager's recommendation, simply with the suggestions that you're making. Today, let's just do a two-week continuance, that'll give everybody a chance to see it. And then we'll have another meeting. At that meeting, we can go at it and we can discuss. And somebody wants to change this or that and, and, and we've got it.
That's fine. I just don't want it to be delayed ad nauseam because then
It won't be.
At the next meeting, we're going to have other
Two weeks and we're good to go, I hope. Councilor Benavides?
Just make comment. In the past, we have run into similar discussions regarding allocations with, with CDBG. Exactly. And what we've done is we have all had the opportunity to provide to the city manager's office, city manager, what our recommendations are. They've been, they've consolidated those. We've then had an opportunity to look at everybody's feedback and have been able to, to make recommendations or decisions from there. So, that's, I agree that we do need to make, take action, but having, all of us having an opportunity to make adjustments, I think it's, it's the only fair way to go versus just having one individual dictate what the rest of us have to, to accept or respond to.
And in fairness to Councilor Sarmiento, he's not dictating. He did speak to those that he could. I was one of them and I happen to agree with what he's suggesting. But I want to be fair to others that have not had that opportunity, which is why I, I believe we ought to take this approach. So...
Yes, Councilmember, nobody's trying to dictate. And I think that as, as the city manager can tell you, I went to him first to say, how is it that we can work, we can work to make sure that all my colleagues are able to opine on this? Because nobody's going to force this process. We need five votes to approve any plan. And so, if you're going to have some disagreement with an amount, as I do, we need to have an opportunity to all hear ourselves out. So, if that was the only way, look, that, that was the only issue, that was the only option that I was left with. So, that's why it was being introduced.
Thank you. Just a point of word, let's just take on this subject. Councilman Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. And I knew we were going to get to this problem and we're going to have this problem. And this is why when we had our study session, I was very adamant about how we were going to move forward the priority list. I want to be quite honest and candid here with all of you here on the dais, is that some of us worked tirelessly on this plan. And when the first recommendation came from the staff, from, from our city manager, there was, it was literally going to be a rubber stamp. This was not a funding plan that is equitable. When you do not include our insity employees on the first go-around of the strategic plan, when we say we care about our employees, about the growth of our employees, at the end of the day, it is the city employees that make a difference out in our community that are working every single day. Not one item was included in the recommendation that staff provided to us. Number two, finances, there was not one item included. And when I look at this and, and I see what the community wanted and I'm, I'm reviewing, and how did our staff come up with this recommendation? I'm still baffled how we actually got there. And I've had this discussion with our city manager, I've had it with Robert. I'm, I'm trying to figure out a way, as an entire council, how do we have a candid and a transparent discussion of where we want to go? We all talk about being equitable, about wanting to make sure that we support our city staff. But when you do a first plan and you exclude two important items, goals, that is not equitable. And I think that the community would not oppose wanting to support our city employees. And when you did the checking of, of recommendations and what the input was from the community, a lot of the time, the residents are not going to think about our employees. It's our responsibility and our due diligence to say, hey, we need to provide enough tools for our, for our employees to make sure. And you know, the, the quality management team, Roman Reyna mentioned that at our, at our study session, wanting to make sure that we had the quality management program that we had once upon a time. That was in the plan, but it was not a recommendation from our staff. And we were up here and that was one of the reasons why I seconded the item to continue it. Because this decision falls upon the city council, not our city manager, not our staff, not the community. We were elected to make sure that there is, that, that we're equitable when we're dealing with all city issues, city employees. And we didn't do that in the first go-around. And so, I will say shame on me, but I caught it and, and, and it's not anything negative towards our city manager, our, our, our staff. But the responsibility falls on the mayor and council to making sure that we review these items and that we make sure that there is balance. Right now, the recommendation that the staff provided us, there is an imbalance. We need to make sure, yes, we're going to provide youth programs, things, community police and all the things that we wanted, that the community wanted. But we also need to make sure that when we look at other things, in particular our employees, that we take them into account. Because at the end of the day, we are only as strong as our employees. They are the ones every day that are carrying out the duties of the city. And when we don't, I, I could imagine if we would have approved this plan without pulling it, what the employees would have thought. And I'm just being honest, the first go-around, and they participated in the surveys. They participated. And, but we didn't take that into account. And I, I'm not sure how our staff got there. They're saying that they rated it based on all kinds of community input and city council input. But I think there's a lot of disagreement because the city council didn't come back again to look at this and say, look, are we, are we okay with this? Are we on the same page here? And if we're not, let's have this discussion as we are having it today. And I believe that we'll get somewhere. I think we all want to meet in the middle. Me and Roman talked about the youth scholarship program. And yeah, we had a little bit disagreement, but at the end of the day, we're still committed about serving our youth and how we go about it. And we can go ahead with all these other items, but we need to make sure that we're balanced, that we're equitable across the board. We cannot just focus on five goals and leave the other three. When we said these were going to be the top eight goals of the city and exclude three in the first go-around. And that's my concern and I think that we need to contribute to that. And I'm hopeful that at the next council meeting, we will be very supportive.
So, with that, if I may, Councilmember Sarmiento will communicate all this to, to staff. It'll come back to us. We don't want to continue to ad nauseam, but if there's a motion matter for a two-week continuance, maybe that's appropriate.
Now, yeah. Real quick question for our city attorney. Now, once we get, you know, Councilmember Sarmiento's modifications, now we'll be able to look at it and, you know, say tweak it here, tweak it there or how are we, I'm still not clear on the process. I think we need to have a process so that when we come back the next time.
Second go-around, third?
Right. We, there has to
Well, I mean, I think the process is always going to be that you're going to get a professional recommendation on an agenda item
Right.
From the city manager. Councilmembers can ask the city manager and his staff for questions about that professional recommendation. You come to the council meeting prepared to agree with it, make amendments or continue it.
Okay.
I think in this case, we are seeing a very significant proposed change to the staff, professional staff recommendation. And staff is just saying, that's great, you, but you have to carry it because I can't, I don't know how to do this with what. So, so I think the recommendation is in cases where you have this significant a change, you may want to distribute that in writing. Probably the best, fairest way is to provide that to the manager or the city clerk. He or she can then provide that to you. Once you receive it, you can consider it, you can make notes, you can call staff and ask questions. But you can't then discuss among yourselves how you're going to vote on it once you're back there.
But, but what you can do, what I would recommend, Councilmember, whatever thoughts you have, put them on paper, give them to the city manager.
Correct.
He can receive it and he says, I've got this from this council member or that council member.
Okay.
And we'll go from there.
The city staff can be a conduit for your communication.
Okay.
And whether it's to communicate what you desire or what you communicate to change.
Okay.
But what they can't do is just implement because one or more of you are asking
Councilmember Sarmiento, please.
Look, I'm, I'm fine with continuing it because now we're having the discussion we should have had last, at the last meeting.
Correct.
This is really unfortunate because we're kicking the can again and we've kicked it before. And I'm fine with it so long as we understand that now we are going to do certain things and we're going to make those, those difficult decisions. I just think that we should have had this conversation early on, understanding that there's no ideal way for us to sit down together as a group and do it except before the public. And if we are going to do it this way, look, if other people have different adjustments that they need to make, they can introduce those as well. But let's study this, let's do our, let's, because if we don't, then we're just rubber-stamping something that really doesn't make sense. I mean, we're vested with making these different value judgments and these policy decisions. So, I just hope that we're not just prolonging the, you know.
And I believe we're not
I just hope, I just hope we're not here in two weeks doing the same thing we're doing now.
And I guarantee you, we won't be. I really believe that. Ms. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, a very quick question. I would just like to ask everybody to give me the changes they recommend, not to, hopefully not bring more changes at the next meeting that no one's had a chance to prepare for. And then I will make sure that everybody gets a copy of that. And if we could get the changes within five days from now, we'll have a full week. And then the council, at that point, will have all the changes that are being recommended by the mayor and the city council. And then someone can then move an item forward.
All right.
Just last one. You know, as, as we move forward and focus on all these different goals that we have, and we have plenty, and unfortunately, we don't have all the resources to fulfill all that. This is exactly why priorities come into play. What comes first, what comes second, what comes third, and they all can be priorities. Dollars only go so far. So, as we go forward, please keep this in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to thank Council Sarmiento because I know he's the guy that came to me and I know he must have spoken to Michelle. And, and probably that was it because of the Brown Act. But, but he's very right in that if we go through a process and it doesn't look right and we don't say anything, then how are we going to blame anybody afterwards? It's really up to us. So, you know, democracy in action. So, with that, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, what's the next item? 65B, I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Is there a second? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. I now want to go on to item 75A. And what we're probably going to do is, is hold a public hearing and then continue it just because I know that there's several, you know, questions and thoughts folks have, nothing that reflects upon the project. But if there's folks here that want to speak, you'll have your opportunity in, in just a few moments. This is the time in place to call over a public hearing to consider the final environmental impact report. It's for a project located at 20, excuse me, at 555 East Memory Lane. And do we have a brief staff presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. We have a brief presentation about this project. This project is the Parkview at Town and Country Manor. Just to orient you to the site, it's at 555 East Memory Lane. And on this slide, you can see the project site in the sort of orange color right there with Lawson Way to the left of the slide, curving around Memory Lane just to the south of the project site. Town and Country Manor is today, it's, it's a nonprofit organization licensed by the State of California to provide assisted living and skilled nursing care. It was originally entitled back in May of '72 to be a residential care facility for the elderly. And in '89, they added on a skilled nursing wing. This project continues to allow them to add another component of care. This would be for active seniors who would move into the project, perhaps at a younger age, a more active age, and then continue to live in the project through a continuum of care as they age and needed more assisted living services. It's 174 one and two-bedroom units with 275 parking spaces in a subterranean structure beneath the building and a remodeled aquatic and wellness center. The site plan, real quickly, on the left-hand side of the screen, you'll see a sort of an L-shaped blue building, that would be the new building. Today, that is a parking lot and just a landscaped area on the corner. The rest of the site is a combination of one, two and three-story buildings and an integrated campus, about seven buildings. They also have a chapel and an outdoor pool, which is where the new aquatic and fitness center would be located with the remodel. I have just a couple of elevations. These are the primary street-facing elevations that you see here. The, this project has been in process for a while. The architecture was one of the things that staff had significant comments on and the applicant and their architect worked very closely with the planning commission actually to make some significant changes to the building. It is an eight-story structure, so very significant building. And I have a slide later on that shows sort of the context where this building would fit with some of the other larger structures in the area. So, this is the elevation that would be facing Lawson Way and then the elevation that would be facing Memory Lane. And I also have some boards behind you as well. There was an environmental impact report prepared for this project. It was originally prepared in 2010. It was updated again in 2012. We did go through the typical response to comments for the project. It analyzed a wide range of impacts. There were no impacts that couldn't be mitigated to a level of less than significance. The required actions for the project would include a general plan amendment. The project area right now is, is a general plan land use designation for medium-density residential. And it would also require a zone change. This would create a new specific development for this project site to allow for the entire site to become an integrated campus and set new development standards for that. That would be a specific development. Just to give you some context and to see what other sorts of structures and development are in this area, the area that's shaded in the reddish color is the existing general plan district center area. And this district centers are areas of intense development, high activity. So we have here City Place, we have the main place shopping mall. And then, not in our city, but just to the north in orange, you can see there's an eight-story parking structure, just kitty-corner from the site, a sixteen-story office tower, another multi-story office tower just to the east of the project site. And then on the corner here in the project site was, would be where the eight-story structure would be. We did a lot of outreach, both to the City Place loft owners as well as to the Park Santiago neighborhood just to the south and engaged them quite a bit in this process, just as recently as in April of this year, when we also went back out to them, just continually keeping them in the process and involved and up-to-date on what was happening. There have been no areas of significant concern. We've had no one contact us recently and we did just make phone calls again just this week to make sure that they were aware of what was happening. Just a little bit of background on the total approval process. As I said, there was an EIR that was prepared, released in 2010, again in, in 2012. It's gone through a number of study sessions over the years with the planning commission, very well-studied project, most recent community meeting in April, and then it was recommended for approval by the plant, by the city council on April fourteenth. If this project is approved by the city council, it would allow for the construction of an eight-story, an eight-story, a hundred and seventy-four-unit active senior residential facility. Would include a change to the general plan as well as a change to zoning. And there are three recommended city council actions, the certification of the environmental impact report and the adoption of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, the adoption of a resolution approving a general plan amendment, and the adoption of an ordinance approving the zone change. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Karen. If you can be available for questions, let me now open up the public hearing to members of the audience. Madam Clerk, I have no requests to speak from you, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, well, let me go ahead and keep it open. Does anybody want to address this on this item at this time? I know the applicant is present. If we have any questions, we'll go ahead and call the applicant. So with that, let me close the public hearing and suggest that several of my fellow councilmembers want more time to review the project. I will tell you that, to me, preliminary, it looks very good. You've gone through all the process. It seems like to be a very elegant building, but I just think we need time and, you know, for some reason, it got us a little bit flat. So I wouldn't want anybody voting yes to it just because they don't know enough about it. So what do folks have in mind? Two weeks, thirty days? What would you have in mind?
Well, my colleague, Councilmember Benavides, would like to meet with the...
So we'll continue it for thirty days? Is that going to cause anybody any problem?
I think thirty days is fine with me.
So let's do thirty days. I would encourage the applicant to meet with any councilmember that wants to, to meet. Some may not want to because they already know enough, but if they want to know more, please go ahead and meet, answer questions. And, and then we're not going to have the public hearing again because we had it today. We would just bring it back in thirty days to vote on it, just for consideration. So with that, we have a motion, a second. Pardon? Yeah, well, I had a mezquita and then Benavides was nodding, but, so let's make a mezquita the maker and Benavides a second. Is that okay with both of you? So with that, we have a motion, a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously. And that takes us, we're going to recess and convene the housing authority meeting. I would entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
So move.
Motion by Benavides, second by Mayor Pro Tem Tina Hedo. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Now, we're going to go to city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Michelle, do you want to go first today? All right, you'll, get ready. Go ahead.
Very brief report. First of all, I want to again officially welcome Devin Leonard. I was on the interview panel. He was definitely the best and we're so excited that you're joining us. And I know that there's going to be lots of activities and outreach and meet and greets, so I just want to welcome you again. Thank you. And Cinco de Mayo was wonderful, council and the mayor. Obviously, we're very supportive of that event. It was the first time the city organized it and I can tell you that we had over a hundred thousand people turn out. The coach for the Mexican national soccer team was very popular. We had good entertainment, so I want to thank all the staff that put that on and all the council and the mayor for their participation. And then finally, just again, encourage all the employees that work for the great city of Santa Ana to ride their bike to work. And tomorrow, we will be there and I look forward to seeing Vince Sarmiento on a bicycle. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Martinez, please.
Thank you, Mayor Polito. I first want to start off to make sure that you close the meeting and I know the salon, I can't pronounce Rafa's last name, but I'm not sure if you have it there. His father passed away, which is also, do we have it there?
No, all I have is Michael A.
Okay, yes, and that's Alfredo Almes was also uncle, just, I, I didn't see that, so just want to make sure. I know they've been part of this, this community for a long time.
Madam Clerk, can you please note that for the record?
Close the meeting in honor of...
I will, and I'm going to make sure that she... What, what is the name again?
I can't pronounce the last name.
Rafael Solorsano.
Solorsano.
Great. So we'll get to that. Second, I would like to, you know, really thank our staff and we bypassed this. I didn't want to pull another item because you guys get all frustrated because all I do is pull items and try to hold staff accountable, but I did want to thank our staff in particular in regards to our 2014 state and federal legislative priorities. This is the first time the city of San Ana is actually doing this. Myself and Councilman Sarmiento sit on this committee and our staff has worked, where is Mark Lawrence? Did Mark leave already? He lives in Los Angeles, so he lives kind of far. But I really, truly want to thank Mark Lawrence for his efforts and working with our lobbyists to put this together and really put together our priorities and how we move forward as a city. I think for a, a very long time, not having a priority list and just each director or each councilmember having, you know, different legislative policies and writing their own letters, et cetera, if we all can be on the same page and we certainly approved it today, seven-zero. I just want to encourage my colleagues who did not participate in this, in this committee and if you haven't had the opportunity to review, please review it. It's really in detail. It really highlights a lot of what we're trying to accomplish and as we move forward, there is a process of how the city is going to be able to write letters, et cetera, et cetera, on behalf of the city of Santa Ana and what we would like our city manager to do in many respects as well and our city attorney and, and how we communicate with our lobbyists. And a lot of our goals and priorities based on our strategic plan are in this document. And again, just want to thank Mark Lawrence and the rest of the city staff for really putting this together. It's greatly appreciated. I know Alma did a lot of work as well on this and so I'm just very grateful that we're moving along and taking some extra steps to really be communicating with one another and with our lobbyists because I think that's very important. In the past, we've just given retainers to our lobbyists. They don't provide reports, they don't, you know, and, you know, those days are, have ended. They need to provide reports, they need to know what our, our priorities are on this council so they can go and get grand money, et cetera. So I'm really glad that we moved forward with that this evening. Secondly, I would like to thank Karen Halusa, our, our acting planning director. We recently just received an award last Friday for the Triada at the Station District for a planning award and want to thank my, my colleagues for approving, you know, the great work that we've done in regards to upzoning and, and specifically the Triada District and also related. We received the sustainability for planning. I'll tell you that when they provided the video and the presentation, that many elected officials from all Southern California were extremely impressed. Many of them came up to me and I'm assuming they came up to Karen and saying, "How can we come and take a tour and look at this project? We can't believe that this is affordable, this is an affordable housing project. We can't believe that you worked with the developer, worked with the community, you have a community center, you've done, you've been able to put retail." And again, this is a joint effort that we were able to do together with our staff, with the community, with the developer, and we received another award. And so I just want to thank you, Karen, and our staff and the mayor and council up here for moving us in another positive direction. I just thought it was great. And Karen also participated on a panel and she was amazing. She was a rock star. I will tell you that at the end of the panel, and this was the first time that SCAG actually had a healthy livability panel with Al's, some other folks within the health industry and, and Karen really talked about, you know, the Harbor Pacific Plan and what we're trying to do in regards to mobility and tying all, all of that in and she just did a terrific job. And again, everyone in the room, a hundred-plus elected officials and vendors gave her a round of applause. So it wasn't just me being her, her cheerleader. There were a lot of folks in there just saying the great work that the city of San Ana is doing. And again, I want to commend our staff for helping us move in that direction. So Mr. City Manager, you have some great people working for you and working for us and, and, you know, they, they, she, they really made us proud at SCAG. And so I also wanted to take the opportunity and, and our city manager already mentioned it, that we have bike-to-work a week festivities tomorrow, starting at seven AM at the train station. We will be leaving at eight o'clock and then we'll be ending up here about eight-thirty. It's only one mile here at the Plaza de Flags. We're going to have the raffle. You have to, you can't just show up to the Plaza de Flags without your bike, not participating. You will not be able to participate in the raffle for two of the bikes that we will be raffling off. You actually have to participate in riding the bikes. So Councilman Sarmiento, you can participate in the raffle, but you have to make sure that you ride from the train station to Plaza de Flags.
I'll bring my tricycle.
Great. And so we're just really excited and, you know, I just want to thank our city manager for his leadership and being willing, you know, this is the first time ever that, you know, we have a city manager that is that, that is this active and that is this committed. And it really just shows leadership to your staff, that this is a direction that we're taking, you're hands-on and we certainly appreciate it. And I certainly, I know I do. Next, I would like to just also thank all the mothers, Mother's Days coming up and certainly, you know, thank all of you for, you know, being great mothers out there to, to all our children and, you know, enjoy the festivities and, you know, I certainly, you know, my mother passed away four years ago and certainly every day that that holiday comes up, it, it hits close to home and, and, and it reminds me, but at the same time, it brings a smile to my face because I know we have a lot of great mothers out there here in the city of San Ana and a lot of single mothers. And to all my colleagues, to their wives who have children, I hope that you guys will take them, take your wives out and, and celebrate because I, I know that, you know, all of them are great wives and, you know, they do a tremendous job. And I want to wish my colleague Angie a happy Mother's Day.
Thank you.
You're very welcome and wish, you know, both my clerk and my city attorney a happy Mother's Day as well as it approaches. And with that being said, have a great evening.
Thank you. Councilor Sarmiento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to begin by congratulating Chief Rojas, who must be home or celebrating with his wife somewhere, and thank the city manager on a great appointment. I know the process was a long one, it was an extensive one, but I think the right choice was made. He's, he's going to be a great, he's going to be a great chief. I think he's going to, was it, was, did I hear he's the tw-?
Twentieth.
Twentieth, so that's a good, good number to be on. So thank you for that. And I want to also echo what, what was said earlier about Cinco de Mayo this past weekend. We had a three-day event there and it was well-attended. It was, it was great. The weather was, was perfect and we had an opportunity to see how soccer crazy our fans are out there and I didn't realize how popular this soccer coach was, but we caught him on the way to Brazil. He's going to be coaching the Mexican national team in the World Cup. And so one of the agreements or covenants that we made with him was that when he wins the cup, he has to bring it back here to San Ana. So he agreed to do that and we hope, we wish him well and we hope that they do extremely well over there. And the final thing I wanted to say is, I want to wish all the mothers out there a happy Mother's Day, especially my wife and my mother who put up with me and as many of you, I'm blessed to still have my mom and she's somebody who I care for dearly and I love and has made me the person that I am. And so all of you who have your mothers who are blessed to have them, please treat them well, love them. Life is very, very short and we realize that, you know, they, they play such a special role in our lives and, and it's, and it's something that sometimes it's very difficult to describe in words, but the love that we can show to them on that day, hopefully we show every day to them. So with that, Mr. Mayor, everybody have a good evening.
Thank you. Now, our Mayor Pro Tem, Selteen Hedo, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Again, I want to echo what Councilmember Sarmiento said, happy Mother's Day to all the moms out there. Yes, I will be going out with my wife, but she'll be taking me out because she makes more than I do. But anyhow, I'm just kidding. I'm kidding. I'll buy her something. Anyhow. But no, the reality is, you know, I want to wish my wife a happy Mother's Day and my mom as well, a happy Mother's Day. She didn't have to put up with me, I had to put up with her. But I'm teasing again, I'm joking. I'm sorry, Mom, I know you're still up watching. She can't speak English, so it's a good thing. I'll translate for her later. Anyhow, in all seriousness, in all seriousness, again, what a wonderful day it is to be in Santa Ana. I think, I don't think we've seen days like this in years where people are talking about our city, about coming to our downtown, about checking out our art here in the city of Santa Ana. I, I've never, I've been in elected office for fourteen years and I've never seen anything like it. People are talking about moving back to San Ana, moving here. I always tell them, "You should have never left." But isn't it wonderful to be a part of that solution, to be a part of that change? And I think that's something that we need to continue to celebrate every time. I mean, we have the best drinking water, best tasting water in the whole United States. Our crime is down. We went from possibly having a deficit of millions of dollars to bringing in our Joe Montana, our quarterback from Phoenix, to now we have a ten-million-dollar surplus. So I'm not, I'm not going to ever stop talking about it because when you have good things to talk about, it's important to be excited about it and to always thank staff and the colleagues that I sit up here with. There is something exciting that happened this last week. There was a featured art, there was an article that featured one of our baseball coaches at Seagerstrom High School, Erasmo Ramirez, who played for the Texas Rangers, for the Oakland A's, and also for the Florida Marlins. I coached him when he was eleven and twelve, that's why he's so good. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. He's actually, I'm, I'm glad I didn't hurt him. I don't, you know, they never should have let me coach that kid. But anyhow, he got the right training and he's where, and, and he was able to make a, a name for himself, but more importantly, he's never left San Ana and he believes in developing young students here in the city of San Ana and his baseball team is doing very well. They have been invited to play at Angel Stadium on Friday at three-thirty in the afternoon. Angel Stadium, three-thirty, they will be playing Orange. So we want to get as many people from San Ana to go out and cheer them on. It's going to be a great experience for our students to play at Angel Stadium. And just wanted to make that announcement, Mr. Mayor, and again, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll be calling you in a moment for adjourning the meeting. So with that, Councilwoman Mescola, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank Gerardo and his staff for a tremendous Cinco de Mayo event over the weekend. It started on Friday. I had the opportunity to stop by on Saturday, got to take pictures with the Oroscopo girls and a lot of fun, a lot of families out there celebrating. Great event. So Gerardo and your staff, wonderful job. Also, I'd like to remind everyone that you need to register by May nineteenth in order to participate in the primary election. If you haven't registered to vote, our primary is June third, so please take the time and, get that done if you haven't done so. Also, want to congratulate again and welcome Chief Rojas officially now, our chief of police. I do want to mention, this is teacher appreciation week. So Sal, teacher appreciation week. I do want to appreciate all our teachers in San Ana unified, you know, for all the, I want to thank them for all the hard work and dedication and for making a difference in the lives of our students each and every day. Also, finally, before I forget, I'd like to, which, wish everyone a happy Mother's Day. And for those of you who are fortunate enough to still have your moms, you know, do appreciate them and take them out. And, you know, moms are the best thing ever. So enjoy this Sunday and, you know, all moms. My sister-in-law, thank you for watching my kids. I really appreciate it. She's like the second mom to my kids now. So everyone have a wonderful Mother's Day.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilor Reyna, please.
Yes. Good evening. As always, remember, we live in a desert. Another day in paradise, absolutely. But we do live in a desert, so please conserve water. Water your plants at night or purchase some drought-resistant, California-friendly plants, as I do. Unfortunately, didn't have an opportunity to get over to the Cinco de Mayo event, had some personal things going on. But I was able to get over to the Orange County Marathon over on Segastrom. Phenomenal event. There was a lot of runners. I complained about a 5K, let alone a full marathon. So I did really good on the sidelines cheering people on. So we definitely need to be a little bit more physical, physically fit, and I need to showcase that with actions. So I'm working on that. Second one, as we mentioned earlier, you know, our budgetary situation is a little bit better off than it had been in the past. And if things go according to plan, things will continue to prosper in our community. And in the past, we had a standalone recreational department and recreational focusing on leisure time, on fun and entertainment. The goal for recreation was not educational. We did have a library that was a separate branch that did the educational components. Our schools do our educational components. But I think it's key and critical for us to spend time doing recreational time. That's why every single one of us takes vacation, to get away from work, to download and just to be, and enjoy the environment, enjoy the time. I'm concerned that we're going to have our department moving in a direction and overreach. What I'd like to do at this point is direct staff to come up with a definition of what recreational is and how we apply that as we move forward. In addition to that, as we talk about the strategic plan, I would like to separate the recreational and educational component. I believe they're two different ones, and they should be addressed differently. Recreational is for entertainment, for fun, for leisure. And educational is a different component of that. So I'd like to direct staff to do so. And saying so, as I always do, Happy Mother's Day to everybody. Please give Mom a hug and a kiss as often as you possibly can. And shop in Santa Ana for a gift for her. Thanks so very much.
Thank you. Councilor, wait a minute, real quick. Councilor Martinez, you had a quick thing?
Just go ahead and let me know.
And then, because then we got more. Councilor Benavides, please.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there's always exciting things, good things going on in the city of Santana. It's a wonderful place to live. It's a pleasure to, and an honor to serve here. It's been mentioned a few times, the Cinco de Mayo event this weekend, an art walk as well took place on Saturday. It was a place to be. Congratulations to Herardo, your team, City Manager Cabasos for supporting, you know, this new effort of having the city host and lead that celebration. Again, always just contributing to the wonderful things that are taking place in the city. This evening, we had an opportunity to welcome essentially two chiefs. Again, congratulations to Chief Rojas, but we also had a little brief intro to new Chief Leonard. Want to welcome you to the beautiful city of Santana here and look forward to working with you, getting to know you, and having you serve again this wonderful city and our great citizens. Welcome. As it's been mentioned, this weekend, Mother's Day as Mexican moms, it's kind of cool because you get two. May 10th is Mexican Mother's Day, which is Saturday, and then you get it again on Sunday. So my kids are blessed that they have a wonderful mom and Happy Mother's Day to her and to my mom, who I'm blessed to still have as well. Feliz de las madres, Mama. And Councilman Tinajero, as you go out shopping, make sure to shop in Santana. Want to encourage the rest of the folks here to do the same as well. Have a good night.
Thank you. Councilor Martinez, quickly.
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, I was looking for my notes, and I wanted to address, you know, the May Coalition did come here tonight. And I wanted to make sure that we heard you loud and clear. And I don't want you to think that we are ignoring you, and this is why I wanted to have some comment here. And I wanted to direct our city manager to please provide, to meet with them and provide them the jail profitability study. I know that when Kevin O'Rourke was here, we had asked for us to do this report. I still haven't seen that report myself. And so I think it's important that we start having this dialogue, that we are transparent. We did put in the strategic plan that we would come back a year from now. And, you know, we know that we have a lot of issues that we need to address, and this is one of them. But the reality is this, is that we need to be as transparent as possible and give them the information that they need. Because what the OC Weekly has put out, that's inaccurate information. It's not 100% correct. And so we need to do our due diligence and meet with these folks and provide them the information that's needed. I also want to know, what is the contract amount? How much money are we receiving from the ICE contract? So if we want, if this council decides that we want to end this contract 120 days from now, we've asked for this in the past, I want to know exactly what that amount is and bring that before the council or the Public Safety Committee so that we can review this and make, you know, some intelligent decisions as we move forward. I know we have a year, you know, as we look at this. But look, this is a sensitive issue. It's hurting our communities. There, you know, these folks are going to continue to come to the council meeting. Certainly, I want to make sure that they understand that we're very sensitive to what's going on. But we also, we also have to take into consideration, we have 100 employees or so within our jail system, so we just can't tomorrow just close it down. That would not be the prudent thing to do. But we need to take the steps necessary, and we need to be open and transparent about that. So I'm going to ask that you provide them that report and then also provide the mayor, the mayor and council what that amount is of that contract. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to close with a couple comments. One is that recently, I had an opportunity to go with Councilmember Vince Armento, our city manager, and also our consultant, George Pla. And we drove around here in the city, but specifically, we drove the route for the streetcar project. And we looked at the different alternatives, and we went the entire length of it. And not only was it a very positive trip and tour, but when you begin to see the city and you begin to look at where the different stops are going to be, and you start looking at the connectivity. And what I mean by connectivity is that I believe this is just the first leg. I think that in the future, other cities are going to jump in and want to participate. Already, we're talking about at OCTA allocating $500,000 in next year's budget, which will be very soon, so that a leg can be studied from, you know, 17th Street, right there in Harbor, all the way along Harbor towards Cotella and Harbor, which is Disneyland. Cotella and Harbor is that intersection. And so you begin to see that connectivity. And then, of course, at Cotella and Harbor, Anaheim is already studying and designing and looking at a project that would go there eastbound on Cotella over to Arctic. So imagine you start here in Santa Ana at Arctic, go through the downtown, along the PE right away, over towards, you know, Harbor Boulevard in Westminster, which is Garden Grove, which is why the first leg is a Santa Ana Garden Grove leg. But then from there, you know, north along Harbor to Cotella, and then east on Cotella towards Arctic. It's very, very exciting, and I don't believe it ends there. I think ultimately, we're going to take and dust off the drawings that we had. You know, some of us were here a few years ago, and we pushed Center Line, which was on Bristol. I think that project comes back, and eventually, you'll be able to arrive at the airport, get on the system, come up Bristol and connect to the previous system I described. And I think there can also be another leg that goes north, north on Harbor from Cotella over towards Fullerton. You know, eventually, this not only, you know, reaches out to UC Irvine and out to the west, it'll be an entire system. And it'll be analogous to what happened in LA, to where they started their very first leg, and they had like a few hundred thousand riders. And now they have, you know, millions and tens of millions of riders, and the whole system has grown. You can actually move around in LA County now quite well and go different places by boarding different systems. That's what's going to happen in Orange County. And we can be the founding, you know, council members and board members at OCTA that do a huge paradigm shift. And so as we look at where the stations go, it's not the monument that matters. It's not the building. It's the ingress and the egress. It's the ability for people to all of a sudden say, "I live close to that. I live close to the ability to get on that streetcar and connect and go elsewhere." So as we look at projects, it's just so exciting to be able to have that within our mix. So with that, I just want to close in wishing every mother a Happy Mother's Day. And then what I want to do is I want to adjourn in honor of Rafael Solorsano, as Councilor Martinez requested. And then I know that Mayor Pro Tem Seltina Hedo wants to make sure that we also adjourn in favor of Michael Lee, is it? And he wants to say a few words. Please go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, a lot of people don't know, my colleagues probably don't know, the impact that Michael Lee had on my life. But I wanted to give you a little update, a little background on him. He was born on July 12, 1950. He graduated from Redlands University. He received his master's at USC. He married a wonderful woman by the name of Diane Smart in a private ceremony on September 17, 2001. They had a public ceremony with the family and friends on May 25, 2002. Michael Lee, I met him in 1990. He has had, he had three different kidney transplants. And they had lasted a while, and they'd fail, and he was on dialysis. His wife, he and his wife, when the doctor came out and said, "Your wife is perfect." And he says, "Oh, I know this." He says, "No, you don't understand. She's a perfect match." She donated his last kidney, and he had that kidney all the way through. He died from, passed away on, by complications of cancer. So her kidney did work all the way through. Diane Smart described him as the most articulate, brilliant, and funny man she ever knew. He leaves three sisters, Julie Moore, Cindy Frye, and Carolyn Lee, and his father, Charles Lee.